That's ACTV, Ken Girk, and we are good to go. Is that a safe assumption? Sarah?
They're not on screen yet. They're still saying we're hold pending. Yep, now we're on.
Okay. Great. I will call to order the meeting of the City of Pacifica City Council, May 26, Tuesday at 7:09 PM. We will have a, I will read you some information about our meeting format. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-25-20 and N-39-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act and pursuant to the orders of the Health Officer of San Mateo County dated March 16, 2020, March 31, 2020, April 29, 2020, and May 15, 2020, as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. Therefore, it is not physically open to the public. City council members and city staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting via cable or live stream while sheltering at home. You can view it on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. Public comments, for public comments, you can submit them during the meeting by emailing comments to publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. With this city council meeting, public comments may be made by email. Please indicate in email subject line the agenda item number or note oral communications. And in the email content, please provide your full name, meeting date, agenda number, or oral communication. That is your full name, meeting date, agenda item number, or oral communications for items not on the agenda. And specify whether you'd like your comments read into the record during the meeting. Comments should be limited to 350 words and comply with the three-minute time limitation. The total duration of all public comments for each agenda item, including oral communications, will be limited to 30 minutes or subject to the mayor's discretion. Your entire electronic comment may not be read into the record due to time limitations imposed, and comments expressing similar positions may be summarized or bridged to provide for a greater number of individual comments. But your written comments will become part of the record and will be available for public inspection. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check back on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.com for any updates. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and before I ask for roll call, I will read council member Mary Beer's statement into the record. Mary Beer wants to, she, her quote, "I apologize to the community for assuming that I would be medically cleared to participate in tonight's meeting. Regretfully, I have not yet been cleared off of medical leave. I hope the next time you hear from me, it will be in person. Be well, Mary. Get well, Mary. Our thoughts are with you." Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
And councilmember Beer, the record will reflect it has an excused absence for tonight's meeting. Councilmember Vatterlaus. Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Okay, great. We will have this salute to the flag led by councilmember O'Neil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone, any councilmember wishing to pull any items off of our consent calendar?
I move that we pass.
You can visually raise your hand if you want, and if.
You want this way or the other way?
This is fine, I think, yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the consent calendar as it is.
Do you have any public? Mayor Martin, we do have a public comment on item number four.
Great. Do you want to revise your motion, Mike?
Yeah. No problem.
Okay, so do you want to revise it to remove?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I move that we approve the consent calendar minus item number four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please, roll call, vote. Clerk Coffee.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And the consent calendar minus item four passes by a vote of four in favor and zero opposed.
Great, thank you.
Item four.
Yes, Clerk Coffee's going to read the comment.
Okay, I have one public comment for item number four. And this comment comes from Chris Redfield. Staff council, I wish to address the large tentative contract approval to correct the documented damages done by Sierra Mountain Construction, SMCI, on Balboa Way. SMCI was one of the principal contractors on the EQ Basin project. My concern is the confidence and expediency to recover all costs incurred by not only the city, but the neighborhood affected as the result of the clear failure of the contractor. I am a former 10-year resident of Anza/Arguello. Current repairs must be done, not only for those that have been affected since the project's inception, but for the area to thrive in the future. And that comment comes from Chris Redfield. That's the end of the comments that I've received on item number four.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve item number four.
A second.
Okay, can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus. Councilmember Vatterlaus, was that a yes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And consent calendar item number four passes by a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to oral communications. These are, oral communications are going to be read into the record. If you want to send in a comment, please email publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. That's publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. Your comments will be limited to three minutes, and we're at my discretion, and our city clerk will be reading the comments. Anything that's over that will be stopped, and we will have a 30-minute time limitation on the oral communication section of our meeting tonight. Do we have any oral communications, Clerk Coffee?
Yes, we do. We have a number of oral communications. Our first oral communication comes from Jeff Imperato. He states, "Dear councilmembers and mayor, I am a Pacifica resident writing to weigh in against the proposed cell tower adjacent to Terranova High School. I believe the need for the tower isn't strong enough to justify quitting it in, pending the settling of the science around the health effects of proximity to these types of towers, and until Pacifica adopts an updated and consistent policy," in parentheses, "based on current peer-reviewed science and health research," end parentheses, "with regards to these types of technologies. Thank you for listening, Jeff Imperato, Lindamar." The next comment comes from Rick Reese. "The subject is save live music in Pacifica. I am urging you to do what you can to save the live music venues of Pacifica. I have included a letter and link below from the National Independent Venue Associations that I have sent to our state reps, but it is only you that can have an immediate impact on what happens here in Pacifica. Please look at changing some of the local regs, at least temporarily, to allow these venues to utilize any outdoor space that they might have available to serve patrons. Consider allowing the venues to collaborate on an outdoor festival that could allow for social distancing. Ask them for ideas on what can be done to keep them alive. We don't have many local live venues, and if we lose them, it will make, it will make Pacifica a very sad place. Thanks, Rick Reese." And he provides a link at www.nivassoc.org/take-action. And copies the comments below. "I'm writing to you today as your constituent community member and a music lover. For all those reasons, I stand with the National Independent Venue Associations, NIVA, effort in Washington to protect independent venues and promoters in this time of existential crisis. Please support federal assistance that ensures the survival of independent venues and promoters. Every day in conversations on the news, and especially in our social media feeds, we see wildly hyperbolic messaging. But the reality of this one is that if concerts don't resume in 2020, 90% of independent venues across America will most likely not open again, ever, including the venues in our community. Of course, this is terrible for music lovers, but this affects so many more angles. Independent music venues are economic multipliers, community builders, and beloved institutions. A Chicago study estimated that $1 spent at a small venue resulted in $12 of economic activities for neighboring restaurants, hotels, and retail shops. And we believe that the level of financial contribution is consistent in cities and towns across America. What would our communities look like without them? We must ensure their survival. Thank you for your extremely hard work for our state and our country in these absolutely uncharted times." And that's the end of the comment from Rick Reese. The next comment comes from Suzanne Moore. Suzanne Moore states, "May is Affordable Housing Month, and it is an opportunity to give thought to those in our community who have no home. Pacifica's social media is abuzz with important questions about unsheltered motorhomes. It's time for the city to do its best to provide answers. Pacificans are asking, quote, 'Who are the homeless?'" end quote. Quote, "Can homelessness be successfully addressed?" end quote. End quote. "What will it cost Pacifica?" end quote. The December report by the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force, never agendized by this council, discussed these issues, but COVID-19 has changed the picture dramatically. In a presentation, May 22, hosted by the Housing Leadership Council, Kim Hurst, Administrative Secretary to Mike Caligie, the county's Assistant Manager, reinforced the county supervisors remain committed to zero homelessness. Secretary Hurst acknowledged that as we head into times of austerity, the option of safe parking with wraparound services is a serious option. COVID-19 may likely divert funds intended for homelessness. Circumstances are changing rapidly. The city and council can seek clarification from county experts and provide information Pacifica residents are requesting. Last fall, the county did a survey of homelessness in motorhomes, and in Pacifica, the majority had strong ties to this community, were working pre-COVID-19, are over age 50, and desire permanent housing. What does the county expect will change with an economic downturn? In January, Governor Newsom earmarked significant state funds for homelessness. Now funding to counties is being reevaluated. What does the county anticipate? Certain facts cannot be disputed. Many of Pacifica's homeless were once housed here in our community. The county's healthcare for the homeless board estimates homeless are five times more likely than the general population to contract and become seriously ill with the coronavirus. Shelter in place reduces transmission and increases safety for the entire community. The county is committed to addressing this issue. Martin Luther King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." A second wave of COVID-19 is expected this fall. "The time is short, but the Resource Center has drafted a pilot program. Let's seek solutions to meet these urgent community needs." And that's the end of the comment from Suzanne Moore. The next comment comes from Denny Asness. Denny Asness states, "Good evening, City Council. We are in the midst of a global health crisis that is taking its toll on all of us in Pacifica and San Mateo County. It is especially hitting hard those among us who are already facing economic challenges and are subject to even more difficult times now. I am speaking in support of the Pacifica Resource Center plan to provide a safe parking pilot program, which will be even more crucial with a second wave of COVID-19 expected this winter. Houseless people are five times more likely than the general population to contract the virus and become seriously ill with it, since their resources to protect themselves are fewer. The City of Pacifica needs to answer important community questions, identify solutions, and provide guidance to all of Pacifica, and the Pacifica Resource Center plan can be of great assistance in furthering these city goals. Thank you, Denny Asness." The next comment comes from Hyah Gordon. Hyah Gordon states, "Dear mayor, council, city manager, and planning director, I am addressing you tonight about Pacifica's efforts to provide shelter and services to people in Pacifica who live in motorhomes or are, who are unhoused. I appreciate that all of you have been working on this problem for a long time now. My message to you is now more than ever, with the pandemic resources in general becoming more scarce and fear and rumors on the rise, I urge you to work as vigorously as possible with Anita Reese and the Pacifica Resource Center to implement a safe parking program, starting with a pilot run, to evaluate and bolster it before it opens full scale. Many people encourage the idea that Pacificans who live in motorhomes or who are unhoused are the other, by otherizing people who are different than oneself. You don't have to care about them. You can believe falsehoods about them. You don't have to see them as you. You can let your fear fly. I have heard Anita speak at countless city council meetings, and she speaks the truth, which comes from her heart. Pacifica is incredibly fortunate to have her working on our concerns. I urge you to invest the most resources possible to make the safe parking program a reality soon. This will benefit all Pacificans. Thank you very much, Hyah Gordon, Rockaway Beach." The next comment comes from Deej Gold. Deej Gold states, "I want to submit the following comment regarding the need to continue efforts to support Pacificans living in RVs or otherwise houseless. The covert pandemic has by no means passed, and we can expect further infection as businesses reopen. It is therefore more important than ever that the city council continue to develop the safe parking program and refrain from any harassment of this community. COVID-19 continues to disproportionately target people who are not housed. I urge you to work with the county to develop meaningful housing programs, including the construction of public housing, to actually address the crisis of homelessness." Deej Gold, Pacific Manor. The next comment comes from Anita Reese. Anita Reese states, "Pacifica Resource Center remains open during the statewide shelter-in-place order. Our open office hours are Monday and Tuesday, 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM; Wednesday, 1:30 PM to 7:00 PM; Thursday, 1:30 PM to 5:00 PM; and Friday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We are available other hours by phone. PRC continues delivering groceries to 260 families throughout Pacifica weekly, thanks to support from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, generous donors who continue to bring grocery donations, and volunteer drivers. Next month, we are planning to shift our grocery deliveries for those who are not at risk to weekly drive-through distributions. More details will follow soon, including location and times. The moratorium on evictions was extended through June 30. This means families will need to pay their rent for July and begin a repayment plan for any unpaid rent. PRC can help cover back rent. We can also help cover the cost of mortgage or other critical needs due to COVID-19, thanks to SMC Strong and SF Chronicle's Season of Sharing Fund. Taxes are due by July 15, 2020. If you need help completing your taxes, PRC has volunteer tax preparers ready to assist through our drop-off tax program or by providing materials electronically. And PRC's shower program for unhoused Pacificans is also still available by appointment. We are the main entry point for unhoused families and individuals in Pacifica to access shelter options, including options for at-risk individuals. Lastly, the deadline to complete the census has been extended. You can complete the census online at my2020census.gov or by phone at 844-330-2020. Information from the census is used to determine vital funding for healthcare and emergency service funding, like the response to COVID-19. #Everyone counts. If you or someone you know need help with groceries, financial assistance for rent, mortgage, or other critical needs..." mortgage, or other critical needs, tax preparation, or access to homeless services, please contact PRC at 650-738-7470 or via our website at pacresourcecenter.org." And that comment comes from Anita Reese from Pacifica Resource Center. The next comment comes from Carolyn Herramio. Carolyn Herramio states, "Good evening. My name is Carolyn Herramio. I am a homeowner here in Pacifica and a member of Pacifica Housing For All. First, I want to thank the mayor, all council members, and staff for keeping the city running during the pandemic. I recognize that working under the shelter-in-place restriction has added an extra layer of difficulty. I applaud all your efforts and dedication. This evening, my ask is no different from what it has been for the past several years. I urge you to implement the safe parking program that was presented by the Resource Center months ago. I also urge you to take steps to house the homeless in our city to access the resources and programs offered by the county and state. Please be prepared to protect our vulnerable populations before the second wave of the pandemic occurs. We know that the homeless people and people without running water are five times more likely to be infected than the rest of the population. Thank you for listening." The next comment comes from Chris Redfield. Chris Redfield states, "Council staff, I want to extend my gratitude to all city staff, Mr. Kevin Woodhouse, Mr. Lorenzo Hines, all city departments, their directors, the mayor, and the city council for the amazing amount of hard work, dedication, and perseverance in these uncharted waters. You have endured the slings and arrows of our unique locale so far with grace, information, dignity, and professionalism. No one can predict what the near future has in store, and I am confident we are in incapable hands to weather this unprecedented storm. Frustration can take many forms, and in this situation, that is an understatement. To those at the helm, a sincere thank you." And that comes from Chris Redfield. And I'll just take a moment to check to see if there's any other oral communications that have come in. I have an oral communication from Lynn Adams. Lynn Adams states, "This is Lynn Adams, Pacifica Beach Coalition. Good evening. I wanted to thank you for your leadership during this very challenging time. It is pain in all of us, but for anyone fighting for the ocean and planet, the pain is growing daily, from plastic bags in our grocery stores to discarded plastic gloves and masks all over the streets, beaches, and parking lots. While I've not been visiting the beaches due to the COVID restrictions, I've had report after report and photo after photo of the trash left behind by visitors and beachgoers. We at the PBC are saddened to pause our weekly beach cleanups and looking for ways to help despite the health concerns. We are ready to launch a new program called Street to Beach Cleanups, where we empower average citizens and families to step up and clean up our city from streets to beaches of their own accord. If anyone would like to join this team, please email info@pacificbeachcoalition.org or visit www.pacificbeachcoalition.org, and we can help you get proper supplies, so you can clean up your street, your favorite beach, or the areas along your hikes. We are all in this together, and the ocean is now being tasked with additional trash that our normal volunteers can't remove. We need you, all of you, to help the ocean. Please check out our new program and be a part of the solution. Thank you, Lynn Adams, President, Pacific Beach Coalition." And that is the end of the oral communications that I've received so far.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to council communications. Any council member have any updates they'd like to share? Just raise your hand physically. Councilmember Vargas? Sorry, you called on me. Sorry, can you call on someone else?
No problem. Mike O'Neil?
Hey, let's see, since the last city council meeting, I have attended the library JPA meeting, and they are making plans on how they can take and start opening up when it's allowed by the health officer. And I don't know if it's widely known, but if you do need internet, they have adjusted their internet, so it now goes outside the building all the way to their parking lots. So it's kind of a hotspot for you. But they're making plans on how they can operate during the summer with whatever reality we're going to be living in during the summer. Let's see, I also attended the Meeting for Congestion Management, and they also were talking about the issues. A lot of the shuttles for companies are privately funded, and they've shut them down because they don't have employees going there. And they're talking about the challenges they're going to be facing about people not wanting to ride a bus, not wanting to ride Caltrain, or whatever, after this, you know, after we're all let out of the cage here. I also, I did attend a statewide webinar on school funding and from the school, some organization, schools, school services. And basically, all the schools are looking at about a 10, maybe 15% cutback in education, which is going to have a direct effect on our traffic here in Pacifica. And it's probably not going to be very positive. Also attended with Councilwoman Sue Beckmeyer, the North County Fire Department Annual Meeting. And it, once again, went without any incident. We adopted the present budget, present cost allocation, so there's no change to really inform other council members. Also attended the County LAFCO meeting, and it was non-event for Pacifica. There are some concerns about the, one of the supervisors at the last BD wants what's called a municipal service review on one of the special districts in the county, and that will be happening probably. And other than that, I have a couple citizens I'm going to be meeting with and get back to them, and I don't know whether they're going to be virtual, in person, or by phone. So that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Mike. Councilmember or Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, are you interested?
There we go. Yes, I have a couple of things to report. In addition to the North Coast County Fire meeting that Councilmember O'Neill mentioned, I attended a Advanced Life Support JPA meeting, which is the agreement that we have across the county with different cities for our ambulance service. And we voted the budget for that, renewed the agreement, and that continues to be a cost-effective way for us to address this, this need in our small town. So that was a good thing. There is a new group that was formed by the county manager that is addressing some of the concerns that have been raised. I've certainly heard, I don't know how much fellow council members have been hearing from restaurants here in town. That's a big issue in regard to when can we open? When can we have more than takeout? Because it's very difficult for the restaurants to make ends meet with just the revenue from takeout. So this group is a small working group that the county manager has put together, and they're looking at specific guidelines and issues. They need to hear from any restaurants that would like to share feedback for them in terms of the needs that they have, for what they need to hear, what they need to learn, and how they will be able to be reopened. So they should contact Roseanne Faust at SAMCDA, which is the San Mateo County Economic Development Association. That is the person to email, and the city staff can give us more direction on that if you need the email address, or you can get it from me. But please reach out, because this is something they're asking for specific input from restaurants about what their needs are. And I think that we need to give them feedback. On the county manager's call today, I was listening very closely because I'm trying to really wrap my own brain around what it is that we need to achieve in San Mateo County to be able to be open as much as other counties. I'm hearing this all the time. This morning, it was 47 out of 58 counties that are fully reopened. This afternoon, it was 52 out of 58. And it's the Bay Area counties primarily that are not reopened. So what's the issue? The issue has to do with our hospitalization rate and how much of the hospitalization in the county can be related to COVID. We are not meeting the state guidelines for that. Until that is reduced, we won't be able to be fully reopened. There's also a straight number of hospitalizations, no more than 20 hospitalizations on a given day related to COVID. We usually have 50. So we're working to bring those numbers down. It also has to do with testing, and it's a ratio of how many positive cases to the daily tests. We're looking for less than 25 new cases per 100,000 people in our population for our county over 14 days. We're not meeting that number yet. So we're close, but we're not there yet. And when our case numbers stop increasing, we'll be in a better position. The other piece that they're working on is the amount of PPE that's available for our skilled nursing facilities and our hospitals. We're not there yet. We don't have enough gowns. This is the biggest area that we're struggling with in our county. So these are, and the reason that matters is because if there's a surge in the number of cases, they need to be sure that the healthcare providers, the skilled nursing facilities can address the needs. So these are all factors that bear on why we're not open yet. I've gotten feedback from citizens that, yeah, but that doesn't, that's not true in Pacifica. Our numbers are lower. The reality is, this is part of a county-wide assessment. The numbers are based on what is true for San Mateo County as a whole, not just Pacifica. So I just, it's frustrating, but I'm encouraging everyone to please try to understand what the issues are and understand that no one is trying to bankrupt your business. Nobody's doing this intentionally. It's about health, it's about safety, and folks are really very focused on it and working hard to get us there. We're just not there yet. I think that's really all I had. The Economic Development Committee was not able to meet as predicted, but we will be meeting soon. And Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines is helping to get some information out to the members of that committee. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vargas?
Hi. Thank you for your patience. I tried really hard for 40 minutes to connect, and nothing was working. So I thank you for being patient with me tonight. I went to all the county meetings. It's always interesting to hear new information every single meeting. Of course, all of the information that Councilmember Beckmeyer just brought up are the reasons. And I did, I don't usually do this, but I want to thank all the people who live in Pacifica for your patience. It's really trying. We don't get too many positive comments. And also, thanks to Chris Redfield tonight for giving us a positive comment, because we do have a lot of complaints, but I understand that this is a difficult situation for everybody. And thank you for being patient in everything that we're doing. And we're doing it to keep you safe and everybody else. I'm on a new committee with the county on equity alignment. They're doing major studies on the equity between people, not having to do with finances. It's an interesting committee. It's based on food equity and a couple of other items, but not on finances. So it's unique. I also attended the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services, and PG&E gave us an in-depth assessment. What they're doing is now they're going to, instead of doing widespread power outages, they're going to limit it to more specific areas. They are also going to be doing upgrades in Pacifica. They can't, they will only be doing small power necessary, instead of such widespread power outages. So there will be times, they'll notify you ahead, where they're going to be working in your neighborhood to get that done. And you will be without power for about six hours, but you will know ahead. And it'll save everybody from the widespread power outages. So please be patient with that, too. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Sue. I don't have much to report. I wanted to thank Mayor Protem Beck, oh, Mike, you want to talk? You're on mute.
I was going to let you finish, and I just wanted to ask Kevin or Dan something, that's all.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, thanks, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. You said it all, you know, in terms of where do we need to get to in order to be where we want to be. So everyone knows, we know that you are struggling, because we are struggling right along with you. And the only thing we can do is try to help you feel better. But nothing we say is going to make you feel better. It's something that has to happen in order to make you feel better. So understand, we are concerned about the skate park opening. We are concerned about hair salons opening. We are concerned about restaurants, and, I mean, very concerned, so much so, we were going over the budget. We're looking at, I mean, we may have to make cuts, too. It's not, and so, you know, our beaches are, you know, always, always a topic of discussion. And I see a lot of people bashing the city for not doing what they think we should be doing based on county health order. We don't have the capacity to enforce every single, you know, area of the health order to its fullest extent. We're doing the best we have with, with what we have, with who we have and what we have. We're trying to take a soft educational approach. And, you know, if we were to enforce it, you know, with an iron fist, we'd be, everybody would be upset, and the opposite is the same. So please know, we're all getting phone calls. We're getting text messages. We're getting Facebook messages, not just on our personal, but on our council Facebook. We're getting personal emails, we're getting city emails. So we have to check all these different places to be able to get back to you. And we're prioritizing based on what is the hottest item on our plate right now. And we know that the skate park is the hottest item on your plate right now. But just understand, we are all also trying to keep our day jobs, and we're also trying to keep our kids fed and sane and not killing each other, and try to keep our souls fulfilled, too, by being able to get out and take a walk. And I was at the beach today, it was insanity. I'm with you, there were tents, there were towels, there were coolers, and it's really disheartening. And I feel very sad for those neighborhoods that have to, you know, are not used to dealing with the crowds. Please be patient, it's only going to be for a little longer. I suspect we might hear very soon what we're going to do with our beach parking lot. And what we want you to understand about the beach parking is that we have to be in lockstep with our surrounding coastal cities. Otherwise, we open and they don't, we're going to flood everyone to our beach and not, and not, you know, spread it all out. So just, we appreciate your patience. And then I just wanted to give a heads up that the Pride Month is coming up in June, and we will be celebrating with a proclamation, our first meeting in June. So stay tuned, the county is also celebrating. So stay tuned. The, the county is also celebrating. So, and remember, it's not Pacificans that are, that are at fault here. It's, it's people who aren't paying attention to San Mateo County's health order. It's people from Alameda County or Conde Pasa County. So anyway, I know I said I didn't have a lot to say, but, Michael, hand it back to you.
Actually, my question was directed either to Kevin or Police Chief Stidle, and that is, do you have any word on the status of parking lots opening for the beaches and why Southern California seems to be opening before Northern California? And I was just wondering, is there any, you know, rumors or waves out at the beach that, to get those, those parking lots open? I've also heard quite a bit of comments about the Pedro Point Shopping Center, and I know it's private property, but I went out there, and if we had to get a fire truck or ambulance into that parking lot in the weekend, it just ain't gonna happen. And I really think that's a safety measure that needs to be dealt with. And either, either Kevin or Chief Stidle?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember O'Neil. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. We will actually, on the Restoration of Operations Plan later on this agenda, the council may wish to talk about beach parking a little bit more in detail. But a, a brief update is that Pacifica, Half Moon Bay, California State Parks and Beaches, and the county are talking about what a coordinated effort would look like and the timing of that to open up beach parking lots. As everyone's aware, this last weekend, we opened up the closures that we had implemented on streets adjacent to the closed parking areas to relieve some pressure from those neighborhoods, some parking pressure from those neighborhoods. And so the, the next step and, and what the pros and cons analysis of that is, is to actually open up the beach parking. And, you know, there are pros and cons to doing that, but we're undergoing the coordinated effort, as the mayor mentioned, because we don't want to unduly put pressure on any particular location in not being coordinated about that. But I think the council will probably discuss that more specifically as it's, it's part of the Restoration of Operations Plan update later on the agenda.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, great. If no one has anything else, I'll close council communications and move on to staff communications.
Great. Thank you. I'll, I'll just stay on for this then. Talking about the beaches, I, as I have been doing at recent council meetings, is providing the statistics, and numerous of the council members mentioned the, the really diligent efforts that the Pacifica Police Department, as well as the Public Works Rangers, have been undertaking. I think we're doing more engagement and interactions about the rules at the beaches than our neighbors are. At least that's what I'm hearing. This weekend, which of course was a beautiful weekend, lots of folks out. It was crazy. Our, our police department and Rangers interacted with more than seventeen hundred visitors. And these are primarily visitors that are not obeying what we're calling the, the lounge accessories part of the order. So there, we continue that interaction and engagement to let folks know they're not supposed to be lounging. But it's an, it's a, it's an immense task with the numbers of people that are showing up and, and with the nice weather even during this week, it still remains to be, we don't have the resources to, to do all of the enforcement required for that. I do know we've spent more than twenty-five thousand dollars in police department overtime to date just on beach enforcement. So we'll talk more about that later in our restoration plan as well, on the financial component. But, you know, in the warm weather, I just, I just want to express my gratitude for the police officers and rangers that are out there in, in full gear, in the warm weather, interacting with folks to let them know what is allowed at the beaches and what's not. And they did turn away hundreds and hundreds of, of people. So I wanted to move on to some good news. I believe the, the census was mentioned earlier, and Pacifica's response rate, last I checked, which was last Thursday, was at seventy-six point two percent, which is great, but we can do better. But that's compared to a countywide average of seventy point four, seven zero point four, and a statewide average of sixty point nine percent. So Pacifica is doing great on the response rate, and, and as the council and everyone knows, there, there are some financials that are contingent on successful or high response rate regarding that. One thing I wanted to mention is, last Monday night, the planning commission meeting had to be canceled because of a technical glitch in the cable streaming of the meeting where the volume suddenly lowered. And while the meeting didn't have to be canceled because volume could have been, you know, those viewing it on TV could raise the volume. We did take the, make the decision to, to cancel the meeting. I did follow up with PCTV, who also followed up with Comcast and honed in that the problem was related to a software glitch in the encoding of the video and audio at the Comcast facility in Daly City. So the city will be talking with them and getting a letter from them explaining what happened and what they can do to prevent that from happening in the future. So I wanted to mention that. And then as Councilmember Vadalos mentioned, I was gonna mention the PG&E work that's going on to divide up certain neighborhoods in Pacifica. They call it sectionalization, which allows them to have to shut the power off to a smaller number of people if a public safety power shut-off needs to occur later this year or whenever it might need to occur. So there are about thirteen locations where PG&E will be in town over the next month, six weeks, replacing poles and equipment. And we had a briefing with PG&E, and they'll be reaching out well in advance to the residents that would be affected by up to a six-hour power shut-off in the vicinity of the pole replacement that's occurring. So we understand, and, and they understand that it's a tough time with folks working at home and sheltering in place to have your power shut off for six hours, but they're trying to communicate and do their outreach in advance so that residents are aware. While that's a impact to those residents at that time, it's potentially large benefit when a public safety power shut-off occurs and their power doesn't need to be shut off. So I wanted to mention that project. That completes my updates.
Great, thanks. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to items for consideration. Item number seven is the approval of agreement with GHD Inc. for the Beach Boulevard Seawall Reconstruction Project. The proposed action is approved consultant services agreement, attachment one between the City of Pacifica and GHD Inc. for Planning, Engineering, and Environmental Services for the Beach Boulevard Seawall Reconstruction Project in the amount of one point five-ish, and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. So with that, I'll hand it over to Public Works, Deputy Public Works Director Sam Bautista and Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez.
Good evening, council. As you know, my name is Ryan Marquez. I'm Associate Engineer with the Public Works Department. To give you better context on the item before you tonight, I prepared this staff presentation. Next slide, please. Just as a quick overview, I want to discuss the project area and really define it so we're all on the same page with what we're talking about. I want to briefly touch on the history and background of the Beach Boulevard Seawall. I want to reiterate the project need. I want to discuss the scope of work for this agreement, and then I will go over the RFP process that we undertook. I will introduce the proposed consultant, and I will finish up with the proposed schedule as well as the fiscal impact. Next slide, please. So on this slide, you can see a, a map of the Beach Boulevard area. On the left side, you have the north wall in red. You have the pier wall system in yellow, and you have the south wall in green. And then you have the, what we're calling the south gap is circled in blue. These are the four individual aspects that the city will be looking at in this project to identify the need for their replacement, upgrade, and such. Next slide, please. So I'm sure you guys already have and, and have heard the background and, and the history of this area, but just to reiterate, in nineteen seventy-three, the pier was constructed as a sewer outfall from the effluent of the treatment plant where the city council chambers reside. That has since been abandoned, but the pier is obviously still there for recreational purposes. In nineteen eighty-four, the wall was constructed, and the north wall was constructed, and you can see pictures of that to the right. In nineteen eighty-seven, the south wall was constructed. These two walls have differing site conditions as well as designs, and they both have their, their relative strengths and weaknesses to them. Next slide, please. So just to reiterate the project need for this, there have been multiple failures of the north wall since its construction. In nineteen eighty-four, during construction, there was a foundation failure that occurred that forced the city to pivot to a wider foundation, which has held up since then. However, two thousand and one, there was a full wall failure just north of the pier. In two thousand and sixteen, there was a full wall failure at Santa Maria Avenue, which is pictured in the upper right here. And then even as recent as February of two thousand and twenty, there was a small breach near the pier and seawall connection on the north side of the pier, which has since been mitigated. In addition to these failures, we often see localized flooding from wave overspray. We see property damage from wave run-up. And additionally, as you may know, we have a gap between the southern terminus of the south wall and the Sharp Park levee, where city staff piles sand in order for waves not to break onto Clarendon Avenue. You combine all of these conditions with the sea level rise outlook, it is becoming clear that a project is needed in order to mitigate future flooding and other risks. Next slide, please. So city staff prepared a RFP, a request for proposal, and included the following scope that we are requesting a consultant to research into and provide us input. The first phase of the scope of work will be a planning and feasibility phase, and the ultimate goal here is to choose the most viable project alternative. To do this, we'll undertake three main tasks. The first task is to review existing conditions. So we'll review all the existing documents and plans. From there, we can, we'll ask the consultant to recommend and perform additional investigation. This will include a geotechnical investigation as well as surveying to map the area properly. And then we'll undertake the second task, which is to perform a multi-hazard risk assessment. So under this risk assessment, we're going to take a deeper dive into the flood risk of the area, earthquake risk of the area, utilities in the area, environmental conditions as far as water quality and sediment in the area, as well as do an economic analysis. From there, those two tasks will kind of lay the groundwork for Task Three, which is the alternative design analysis. In this task, we will formulate the design criteria for the project under what, what needs to be designed for this project to be successful, and that, that will come from the first two tasks, essentially. We'll formulate the features and amenities toolbox, and this is really where we're going to be looking for public input to give their input and analysis on what they want to see out there, what uses they, they want, what, you know, what aesthetics they would like. That is really where we are looking for the most feedback from the public. From there, we will formulate and rank five alternatives for the project. We will further refine those five project alternatives to a final three. And then finally, we will come up with a preferred design in which we will further analyze and further refine all the economics and all of the analysis from the multi-hazard risk assessment on. For the community engagement, on Phase One, we have the consultant scope to prepare an engagement strategy for the city to review and approve. However, after internally speaking with our team, we are ready to move forward with virtual engagements, whether that be online surveys, interactive maps, Zoom calls, et cetera. We are ready to, to kind of get this kicked off. The, the work is scoped for four public meetings right now, for, for public workshops. And the preliminary assessment on those is to have Workshop One during the kickoff and existing conditions review. Workshop Two during the multi-hazard risk assessment. Workshop Three under the alternative design development, and then a final workshop with the final project alternative. Next slide, please. So after Phase One of the work comes Phase Two. It's the design, engineering, environmental, and the goal of this phase is to produce a shovel-ready set of bid documents to take the project into constructions, into construction. Something to note here is that the outcome of Phase One may either add or refine this actual scope of work. However, for the most part, it should stay consistent. We will want help with the environmental documentation, so all of the technical studies for Sequo documentation, including habitat assessment, cultural resource survey, and then further refinement of the geological and the wave run-up studies that will be undertaken in Phase One as well. We will also be asking for permitting assistance help. As you may remember from our study session, there are numerous permits that are needed in order to perform work in the coast. And so these are, these are for, four of the kind of more work-type permits. There are more, but the coastal development permit, the Fish and Wildlife Survey, the Army Corps 401, and the Regional Water Quality Board 401 permit. And then Task Three will be producing plan specification estimates. There will be three iterations to the plans, specifications, and estimates. And during those three iterations, we are proposing currently right now to have an independent design review of all three iterations. So essentially, that means we would look to bring on a third-party consultant to look at the plans, specifications, and estimates just in order to make sure that we haven't missed anything and that they're all up to. Great. Next slide, please. So just a bit of an outline of, of what we did for the request for proposal or RFP process. The RFP was open for approximately two months from February sixth to April sixth. The original due date was March thirty-first. However, we extended that due to COVID-nineteen just to make sure that the consultants were able to produce the best proposal and to accommodate them getting used to work from home and such. City staff received four proposals on April sixth, and we graded those proposals based off of the five criteria at the bottom of the slide. From there, we invited the top three to do a Zoom interview with city staff, the Half Moon Bay City Engineer, and an engineer from the County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. Just to review the five criteria in which the proposal and the interview were graded, we graded them on the firm experience on, their experience on similar projects, quality of their key staff involved, their, their thought-out scope and approach, their understanding on potential issues, their capacity for innovative ideas. Next slide, please. So ultimately, from that grading, the chosen consultant was GHD Incorporated. GHD has worked successfully with the city on construction management projects such as the two Espinade Revetment Projects recently, the four hundred Espinade and five hundred Espinade Revetment Projects. It works successfully on the Frontierland Parking Lot, and they're slated to work on the Malaga Outfall Project this summer. In addition to the construction management, GHD is on the city's on-call list for coastal engineering as well, where they've provided support in providing a probable cost estimate for replacing the North Beach Boulevard Seawall, as well as providing support for a benefit cost analysis for the city's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program proposal, which the city is currently wait-listed for. Next slide, please. And with that, I would like to turn it over to GHD to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you to the city for allowing GHD to attend this council meeting. It's very much appreciated. So I'm Paul Henderson. I'm a civil engineer with GHD, and I'll be the project manager for the Beach Boulevard project. And just a little about our firm. So our company mission statement is, together with our clients, we create lasting community benefit, which we think fits perfectly into the goals of this project. So unfortunately, we don't have time for me to tell you all about our firm, but we've been in business for over ninety years. We have over ten thousand people globally, and your project will be led from our San Francisco office. We have a number of previous and current projects. We have a number of previous and current projects with the city and the team delivering the project is our specialist maritime and construction, maritime and coastal group. So right now, I think the most important aspect of the city is going to be working through the design alternatives to determine the optimal solution. And this needs to be done in a transparent and objective way. We'll be using a quantitative scoring method based on agreed criteria, and it will be a robust and easily defensible method. For the economics of the project, we'll be utilizing the U.S. Army Corps Engineers National Economic Development Model. We'll be engaging a specialist cost estimating subconsultant to complete this work. And with our team of specialists, we are fully confident of arriving at a design solution that is satisfactory to the majority of stakeholders, including the community and the coastal commission. So obviously, being the Maritime and Coastal Group here in California, we are continuously working with the California Coastal Commission. We're very familiar with this and processes. And on that note, I'd like to quickly share a couple of recent nearby projects as examples of our success working with coastal commission. So just over the hill down at Half Moon Bay, we're currently working on the Pillow Point West Trail project. The project includes stabilization of an eroding segment of the trail that leads up to the Maverick Beach. We originally, we fully designed a seawall, a structural solution, before changing direction to have a living shoreline type approach, and this was the district's preference. We're currently working through the final design and permitting, and we're scheduled to commence construction this coming fall. And our second example is the Santa Cruz Pleasant Point Seawall. So construction for this wall was completed in 2018. It's in a very similar situation to Beach Boulevard in that it's open directly to the Pacific Ocean. So the project was constructed within the active wave zone, which obviously presented challenges, and there's a similar challenges we'll be faced with the Beach Boulevard seawall. And we can certainly reapply our learnings from the Santa Cruz wall. Next slide, please. So while we were putting together a proposal, our landscape architect developed this visualization for a seawall option. So obviously, this is just an example seawall and developed in a short space of time, but we think it conveys that this is not just a seawall replacement project. This is an opportunity to reactivate the space, create something special that the Pacific community can be proud to call their own. And GHD is very excited to be a part of this special project. So thank you for your time, and I'll give a thank you, Ryan. Thanks.
Ryan, you're on mute. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Thanks. Next slide, please. So I'm going to wrap up with proposed schedule and fiscal impact. Our proposed schedule as of right now for phase one is looking from June 2022 to April 2021. Fall goes smoothly. We hope to begin phase two in April of 2021 to February of 2022. And then again, fall goes smoothly. We hope to be in breaking ground in the summer of 2022 with a hopeful end of winter of 2023. But again, all of this is contingent on the phase one outcomes. Next slide, please. So the fiscal impact of this agreement is for a total of $1.497 million, phase one being $657,000, and phase two being $840,000. The funding for this project right now is state funding from AB72. The city received $1.5 million from that. In addition, the city has a $750,000 grant from the Boating and Waterway. The caveat with that is that it must be matched one-to-one with city funds. So when we dip into that funding sources, we will need to have a source of our own as well. Next slide, please. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Okay, great. Is anyone with any questions right away? Do we want to do a public comment?
I have some questions, but we can go to public comment first.
Okay, great. Clark Coffee, do we have any public comments?
Yes, I see one public comment. Let me just check the others.
So let me just remind everyone out there, if you have something that you'd like to say, you email publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us and let us know that you want to talk on item number seven.
So I have a public comment from Kimberly Williams. Kimberly Williams states, "Thank you for this presentation. Does the assessment of what constitutes success also take into account that any solution will preserve Pacifica's beaches and not add to the beach erosion caused by traditional seawall barriers? Also, what experience does this consultant have in cutting-edge knowledge and technologies that are being explored in modern, more environmentally sustainable projects rather than what has always been done for the last 50 years? Is the consultant aware of the Resilient by Design project in the Bay Area? Thank you for considering and answering my questions. Sincerely, Kimberly Williams." And I'm just looking to see if we have any other public comments on this item, of which I see none.
Okay. With that, I will close public comments, and we can come back to council.
A question I had was features and aesthetic standards that was on one of the slides. I'm trying to think when you mentioned, well, basically, when when they were doing the evaluation of the different criteria, I didn't know and didn't notice in the environmental criteria, I noticed that there wasn't anything for recreational in terms of golfing, fishing, hiking, or whatever. And I was wondering, will that be included in the in the standards? In the study that they're going to do?
So if you're discussing the features and amenities toolbox, that's going to be open to public. That's going to be open to the public essentially to comment on what they want to see. So the vision is to try to get as much feedback as possible from fishermen, from people that run there, from surfers, for whoever use the beach, we want to hear from those folks. We want to understand what they want this project to be as well. So yes, we do plan on trying to engage everybody that uses the beach in that area.
But there was certain specified criteria, but like recreation wasn't one of them, and that was a concern of mine because it is heavily used for recreation, the fishing, golf, and hiking, you know, and we're putting in that mini park course or whatever you want to down there. So I just wanted to be sure recreation was one of the criteria that was measured.
We will absolutely be taking the recreation of the area into consideration.
And I guess that kind of answers another question I had is features and as part of the standards, but in all the government agencies that you mentioned, I noticed that the San Francisco PBNR wasn't mentioned at all despite we're going to have to be connecting to their berm with the seawall. And I was wondering, are they going to be input? You know, because they had some strong feelings about the local coastal plan and the comments from ESA and, you know, that during that phase. And I was wondering, are we going to be in touch with SF PBNR?
Yeah, we absolutely can be.
Can be or will be?
We will engage with them certainly. I mean, tying into that area is really important to get them on board with.
Okay. And then I'm going to have to leave for a minute to look for the other notes I had. So somebody else has questions.
Can we go back to the presentation for a second? There was a picture there. The picture of the actual project area, I think it was slide 10. Yeah. Okay. So the where the area that is blown out there is the only area that this project is addressing, correct?
No, so this project is looking at, if you go to the second or third slide, Sarah, it's addressing the entirety of the of the seawall in addition to the gap to the south.
So so the, so from the from the south gap all the way to the north wall, everything that's in color here?
Yes, that's correct. That's what we'll be looking at.
All the way to red, right?
Yep.
Okay. So can you go back one slide then? I'm sorry, the one with the breakout that we were originally looking at. Yeah, slide 10 or yeah, 11. Okay, so this is just an example here of what it could look like. Okay. Okay, sorry for my misunderstanding. Mike, do you have something else?
Yeah, I did find my notes. They were in a different white pad. In looking at the on task 1.4.5, you have, where's, you're going to look at it at a high level. Can you kind of give me an idea of what you mean by high level? I mean, I have in my head what a high level is, but I just want to hear from the staff as to what is a high level.
Sorry, you're saying 1.4.5 on the economic impact assessment?
Well, yeah, it was in in the staff report that we got in our packet. Is this, it was
Yeah, yeah, yes.
1.4.5, yeah.
Packet page 152. So the high level there is is really going to be looking at the Army Corps guidance and following that without diving in too much at that point. But each of the project alternatives will have its own economic impact assessment essentially, but this is to lay the groundwork for them. So this is looking at some of the net positives and benefits of putting in structures of looking at property value, looking at some of the other considerations that are listed in there. So flood control, reduce property damage, emergency response. Those type of items will be looked at, if I'm correct. And GHD, Paul, if you guys want to jump in on this as well to further elaborate, go for it.
No, I think you've covered everything there, right? Yeah, so and we will be refining the those, the economics as we move from the original five alternatives and then to the three alternatives and then to the single alternative.
Actually, that was going to be my next question. And so in task 1.5.3, you mentioned alternative formulation and five design alternatives. And then you go down to 1.5.5 in preferred design. It says the team will refine and assess the top three. Who is the team and who will decide what is being refined and what you're actually going to do? A visual simulation on, you know, because in further on in there, you said that you're going to do visual simulations on three of them. And who is the team that will be deciding that? Is it locals, the council, PBNR, planning, or just you guys?
So generally, for these type of of projects, it's a graded matrix, and I believe that's what GHD has proposed here. There would be agreed upon grading criteria for each of these alternatives. And then we would go through a grading process to kind of give a numerical value to each of the alternatives with taking into consideration public input, council input, staff input, planning, all of all the folks getting together to kind of narrow that down and make sure that that's airtight. And then from there, we move on to the top three.
Okay, so it's going back to you. My first thing is you are going to have standards and stuff to grade these different things that are in a matrix that is going to be set beforehand to
Yes.
After public process. So you're you're kind of answering the first question. Okay, all right, that's pretty much everything I had. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Rosenbeckmeyer.
I similarly have a question on the presentation. The slide that had the Pillow Point project as well as the Santa Cruz project on it.
10.
Number 10, yeah. Could Paul, Mr. Henderson, could you please talk to us a little bit about that San Francisco North Seawall rendering that's there? I didn't, I don't think I heard you, or I'm not sure I understand much about that particular project. And I have a question about this Santa Cruz project as well.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have enough time to talk about the San Francisco Seawall project, but I will pass this off to Craig Lewis, who was the the lead on that project, if you're on the line. Craig?
Hey, Craig, are you there? You can unmute yourself. He appears to be there. But I cannot, oh, there you go, Craig.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, I was answering through my phone. It didn't work too well. Yeah, that that that's a rendering from the San Francisco Embarcadero North Seawall vulnerability study that GHD led back in 2016. We were tasked with doing a site investigation of the complete seawall, about three and a half miles of seawall along the waterfront there, and then come up with or do a seismic vulnerability study, look at hazard to a risk assessment, and come up with mitigation methods or strengthening of the seawall and what, take advantage of what opportunities we might be able to do to expand and strengthen the seawall and open it up more to the public too. So that was just a rendering that was done as part of that study, GHD study.
And then with regard to the Santa Cruz project, for either of you or if there's other people on the call, can you talk about the public engagement aspect of that project? What what was done? Did it follow along the same lines of what our project is like? Any any highlights on how that went?
So that project was delivered by Harakasunich, who's a major part of our team, the geotech specialists and construction specialists. So I, none of the the GHD folks on the call were involved with the the community and stakeholder engagement on that project.
Okay.
I think Brian could probably talk about the community engagement on the Pillow Point West Trail, if that's helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Brian, yeah, Brian Leslie.
Yeah. Yeah, hi, everybody. Yeah, I'm managing the the West Trail project just down the coast and similar team kind of arrangement on that project. And yeah, just meeting with local stakeholders, all the different permanent agencies that are listed on this project, as well as with the district and the different Board of Harbor Commissioner meetings, which has been really just kind of get everyone to the table kind of early. So I think to answer your question, like the engagement strategy that's laid out here just feels like the right one to me, and especially with a team that we've assembled with Kearns and West, who has kind of experience with the city and the stakeholders. So yeah, I think what's laid out here is right and kind of in line with what I'm used to seeing on successful coastal projects.
Can, and for city staff, is Kearns and West, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you this before, but I'm asking you now, sorry. Have we worked with them on our outreach projects through either our planning department or our recent projects? projects that we've been doing? Or did we have a different consultant for that?
I believe they were on board for the LCP process.
Yes, this is Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, and if Director Waremeister is is on, she can indicate whether we've worked on more projects with Kearns and West, but Kearns and West assisted with the communications and outreach plan and implementation for the LCP.
Good evening, everybody. Tina Waremeister here, and that is correct. They were our consultant for the community engagement. And I believe that they did have some experience in Pacifica, but perhaps working with another regional agency that was doing a project that involved Pacifica. So they did hold they have held meetings prior to the LCP in our community center, but I can't tell you for sure if they were ever previously before that a direct city consultant. But they do have multiple experience here.
Great, thank you for that. And another question I had was, I recall, and Tina, you can Director Waremeister, I remember at the time that we were engaging on that project, one of the one of the pieces of feedback from council and the community was, I'm not sure if the community asked for it, or we decided a solution to the need was to add an additional session or two for community outreach. And I just wanted to explore at what point we might evaluate if that is needed with this project and where there is an intersection point. And is it phase one, phase two? How would it? How would we be able to ask for additional? Recognizing it would it would be a change order and would have additional costs, but if we needed for our community, which can seek to have a lot of input on projects like this, how could we modify or increase that community outreach if we determined it was needed?
Yeah, so you are correct that the additional community meetings was mid midstream, determined that it was necessary. And in making that decision, we needed to go back to council to get additional scope. And and it was even outside of any contingency that we had in the project. So I would say, yes, you know, it was something that we determined as we went along. And I would go back to Mr. Marquez, just to talk a little bit about whether or not that's an enemy of the contingency considerations for this project.
I realize it's different department, different project. So yes, thank you very much for that. And Mr. Marquez, can you speak to that at all for us?
Sure. Thanks, Tina. Yeah, we absolutely can add on community engagement. Oftentimes, after the first few engagements, we see, oh, look, you know, there's still a lot of things that we want to hash out, where there's still a lot of people showing up that really want to give their input, or there's various indicators that we see along the way where we say, okay, we want to get out more and we want to hear from more folks. I just completed the bicycle plan last year, and during that, we added on additional community engagement. We added on virtual engagement. We were promoting it through Connect with Pacifica and Twitter and all of the social media, and we intend on doing the same here.
Right, so that's another case in point of the level of community engagement and involvement our citizens want and need to have with projects like this one. So I want to just make sure that that is pretty clear going in to the process. And I did, I don't forget. I don't remember which I forget which slide it was that showed that little table, and there were four meetings kind of scoped out over the course of the project. And I'm not saying we need it right now. I'm just saying it's conceivable to me that we might need to amend that portion. And so as to looking at timelines for the project, we wouldn't want to derail it, but it it would be important to make sure we have enough time included at every stage of the game.
If I may add, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, on on this point, just to reiterate, you know, in in recent years, we certainly have been doing heightened engagement on on projects and numerous large projects where additional public meetings were added or additional tools for public input. And like any large project like this, I anticipate there being frequent updates and touch points with the city council about how the progress is occurring. The you know, there's two main phases, but within each of those phases, there's numerous steps along the way. So I would anticipate a lot of touch points and evaluation at each of those points of, you know, do we have it right here? Are we ready to move on to the to the next point? Did we get enough community input? You know, similar analogous sort of touch points with council might might be the the library conceptual design project that we went through and and taking certain milestones to the council for for input. So if that helps, and then we in the end, we need to add scope and we'll take that to the council for a decision about that and the funding for that.
I agree with you. That was another example. And in that case, we do have the Library Advisory Committee, so we already have kind of a built in group that can participate. In the case of the Bike and Ped project, we had our PBNR commission that acted as the project touch point, as you refer to it with the community. So I I rep I remember with our Sharp Park Specific Plan Project, we did establish a council subcommittee for assisting with that. And I'm I'm not suggesting we do that at this juncture because I realized we're just getting started, but it may be something that we need to consider for this duration of this project as well.
Yeah, and to that point, just as a reminder to the council on on the local coastal plan project, we also did have an ad hoc two-member council committee to to help work, you know, through when we were doing the community outreach plan design.
Right. Um, I think those are all the questions I had at this point. Um, but I'll let you know if something else comes up. Thank you.
Duvarlos? You're on mute.
During these times when we're having all of our meetings by Zoom, I think that may have an effect on this project and hopefully I know it goes into next year. And hopefully, by then, the community will have the ability to come out and go to the meetings because I think this, like all of our other projects, is going to be really important for the community to have their input. And I think they don't feel like they have enough input in the Zoom meetings that we're having. Even though they have the same three minutes, I don't feel like they think they're engaged as normal because they're not able to attend. And I can see this stretching out a little bit if this happens to go on longer than we expect. So I really didn't that really wasn't a question. It was a statement, but I can just see it happening, going on longer. Thanks.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. And and Mr. Marquez, you mentioned that you had looked at the schedule for community outreach and in light of our safer and in place kinds of restrictions, you'd considered there may be some ways of doing Zoom or some other elements. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah. So we haven't quite gotten there yet, and that's going to be one of the first steps is coming up with the engagement strategy. But I mean, there's there's other ways to engage folks in Pacifica. We've seen surveys being really well done with the Pedro Point Headlands. They had a huge reach on their survey. We could do something similar to that to see what folks are using in the area, what their problems are with the area, what they want to see in the area, just to kind of open up the initial dialogue and try to get like a mailing list for interested folks to do something like that. I'm sure Kearns and West has some innovative ideas to push this forward as that's their forte, and I'm sure they're adapting with this climate right now. So I have no doubt if if that is the direction that we would like to move forward, I think the team is ready to do that.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Henderson, you get the point. Pacifica is a community that has active interest in input in projects like this. I just want to make sure you you are really grasping that and understanding that it's it's been happening with all other recent projects, and it would need to happen with this one as well.
Yeah, I do get the point. And we do know it's an important project, and that's why we engage Kearns and West. This is what they do. They're just stakeholder engagement, and they know all the stakeholders. Well, a lot of the stakeholders will be dealing with on this project from the local coastal plan update. So they're hitting the ground running, should we say.
Right.
And well, yeah, our first our first task will be developing the stakeholder engagement management plan. And yeah, at that time, we'll we can discuss the best ways to approach the the various members of the community.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add that that's going to be tough. And we're looking at all of our options in terms of our return to operations plan. So Ryan, I'm sure you'll be working with city manager on things like that. So outside of this project, it is another initiative that we have to undertake and relatively soon. So Mike or Sue, does anyone have any other comments?
Mayor Martin, I'd just like to let you know that I did receive a couple of more public comments if you'd like to reopen public comment when you're ready.
Yeah, I'd like to reopen public comment if everyone's okay with that. Okay, great. Go ahead. Clear coffee.
Okay. So I have a comment from Suzanne Drake. She says, hi. What are the safeguards from the builders to stay in cost estimates? And that was her simple question about the seawall project. I also have an additional short comment from Chris Redfield on this item with the subject line seawall progress. He says, I strongly urge city council to move forward with this proposal. It has immense future benefit to all of Pacifica. Thank you to engineering for their hard work on this. And that concludes the public comments on this item that I've received at this time.
Great. Okay, I'll close public comments. Ryan, do you want to just touch upon that 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 budgeting issue?
Sure. So under this agreement, it will be an hourly rate for GHD to work, and we'll be getting monthly invoices that are tracking progress and the percentage of budget use. So we'll be staying, Paul and I will be staying on top of their budget to ensure that they're not overspending, that they're not over utilizing. And if they are, we reasons of why they are, and we can come to council with progress on that.
Yeah. And so just to answer that sort of public comment, that's what the project manager's job is to watch, you know, your budget and bring it to the the city staff. And then city staff, you know, has a has approval to, you know, has permission to approve certain levels, and then anything else has to go to council. So Suzanne, that hope that answers your question. If there is nothing else, we do need a motion on this. The the proposed action, if you want me to read it, is to approve consultant services agreement attachment one between City of Pacifica and GHD Inc. for planning, engineering, and environmental services for the Beach Boulevard seawall reconstruction project in the amount of 1.5-ish and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. Please note that I rounded up.
So moved.
And Mike, can you unmute yourself?
Second.
Okay, great. Clear coffee. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalaus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And item number seven passes with a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you to those that joined the call. Look forward to moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number eight. This is an update from the city manager on planned changes to certain Fourth of July activities and consideration of direction to staff on whether to allow safe and sane fireworks sales in 2020. So the proposed actions provide city manager direction regarding safe and sane fireworks program for 2020, and city manager Kevin Woodhouse and Police Chief Dan Stidl will present staff report.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dan Stidl, your Chief of Police. And next slide, please. And tonight, as the mayor's already stated, we're bringing you an update regarding planned changes to the Fourth of July activities in Pacifica and for your consideration and direction to staff on whether to allow safe and sane fireworks sales in Pacifica in 2020. Next slide, please. So a little background about how we got where we are to even have to consider this. On March 2 of 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. On March 16 of 2020, City Manager Woodhouse issued a proclamation of a local emergency, which was ratified by this council on March 18 of 2020. On March 19 of 2020, Gavin Governor Newsom issued an executive order for residents to shelter in place. Next slide, please. As you know, the San Mateo County Health Officer has issued several orders ordering county residents to shelter in place. The most recent order was issued on May 15 of 2020. And in situations like this, Government Code Section 8634 and Army Municipal Code Section 4-2.06 subsection A allows our city manager as the Director of Emergency Services to make rules and regulations in a local emergency to provide for the protection of lives and property. Such rules must be ratified by the city council. Next slide, please. So we're considering our Fourth of July activities and considering our orders. We consider that state and county orders are designed to keep the overall volume of person-to-person contact low to prevent a surge in cases of COVID-19. Next slide, please. So regarding the planned changes, the city manager intends to prohibit block parties this Fourth of July. Block party permits are issued by the Chief of Police every year. In block parties, they close streets to traffic. There's usually some sort of party going on, drinking festivities, barbecues, and numerous households, people from numerous households gathering on the sidewalk on their properties in the streets together. Encouraging block parties encourages groups from multiple houses to congregate, which is in violation of our current health order. City manager also intends to prohibit firework discharge in all city parking lots. So every year, hundreds of people gather in the South Rockaway Lot, which is known as the Surfers Lot, as well as the South Lindemar Beach Parking Lot, which is known as the Pump House Lot. Those those parking lots are usually closed down in the afternoon of the Fourth of July by city staff for the purpose of allowing people to come and discharge safe and sane fireworks. They don't have to fire them off on the beach. Also, although it's not city sanctioned, there's usually large crowds of people to gather at 2212 Beach Boulevard Parking Lot, the city council chambers. And staff believes such gatherings of large numbers of people in close proximity risk the spread of COVID-19. Next slide, please. City manager also intends to cancel parks, beaches, and recreation activities on the Fourth of July. There's usually a five-minute rocket run, which begins and ends at the community center. There's also the Frontierland picnic. By nature, these events are designed to bring people together to congregate, which increases the risk of spread of COVID-19. And finally, prohibiting the discharge of fireworks on Lindemar Beach this year. So as you may recall, back in 2013, it was codified that you only the only portion of beach in Pacifica where fireworks could be discharged was a small portion of Lindemar Beach, which is roughly the length of the Lindemar Beach Parking Lot and goes down to the waterline. And for those of you who've been down there, you know, there are hundreds of people that gather in close proximity each year and discharge fireworks. And staff believes that allowing that to occur this year would risk the spread of COVID-19. Next slide, please. So moving on to the safe and sane fireworks sales, which staff is not making a recommendation tonight, but instead presenting to council for your consideration and direction. Our safe and sane fireworks sales occur between Our safe and sane fireworks sales occur between June 28th and July 4th each year. Up to up to 15 nonprofit groups each year may obtain permits to sell fireworks to fund their activities. Including in the sales permit fees is a safety fee of 8% of gross receipts, which is used by the city to offset our July 4th expenditure, which are largely comprised of overtime expenditures for personnel. Next slide, please. And again, in consideration of this, presenting the staff considers that staff and county orders are designed to keep the overall volume of person-to-person contact low to prevent a surge of cases of COVID-19. So taking a look at fireworks sales and discharge, what concerns people may have. Fireworks booths are staffed often with numerous people in close quarters. Crowds during busy sales periods can create physical distancing issues, physical distancing issues amongst customers. And gathering in neighborhoods on July 4th are often centered around safe and sane fireworks. Next slide, please. So taking a look at the pros and cons, if council were to decide to prohibit sales. The pros are the potential reduction of number of fireworks-centered gatherings of larger groups. Would also eliminate crowds at fireworks booths if there's no firework booths to rehab that this year. And from staff's experience over the last two and a half months of this pandemic, we observed that when given the opportunity, people will crowd into areas and will ignore physical distancing order. Next slide, please. Now, the cons of prohibiting these sales, aside from the loss of the fun of fireworks is largely revenue. As we've we've had presentations from staff a couple of times over the last year and a half regarding safe and sane fireworks sales, and we have heard many of our nonprofit groups speak to how much they need this revenue for their for their activities each year. If there were no fireworks sales this year in Pacifica, there'd be the loss of that needed revenue for nonprofit groups. Will also create a loss of revenue to the city. 8% of the gross receipts averages over the last five years, about $33,000 comes to the City of Pacifica. And over the last five years, we are averaging about $35,000 a year for our city costs, again, mostly related to personnel overtime costs for the Fourth of July. So without the sale of safe and sane fireworks, we are still going to incur those expenditures for personnel overtime. We just won't have the 8% of gross receipts to help recoup most of those costs. Next slide, please. So I reached out, I've reached out over the last couple of weeks, most recently on Sunday, speaking to some of my colleagues in other jurisdictions in the San Francisco area, nine area counties, 11 to be exact, those who routinely sell safe and sane fireworks. As you can see from the list here, four of those have decided to ban safe and sane fireworks. Four are allowing sales of safe and sane fireworks this year. One stated they were completely undecided at this point. One was undecided, but likely will allow the fireworks to go on. There was one, I think it was Ronan Park, that actually they're bringing this item to council, their council meeting tonight with the staff recommendation of a ban. Next slide, please. So if fireworks sales were to proceed as a direction of council, the city manager could issue following recognition regulations, which are in line with much of what the county health order already says. Requiring signage on fireworks booths regarding six-foot distancing, requiring fireworks booths, staff to distance six feet from each other while working, hand sanitizer available in the booths, requiring booth staff and customers to wear face coverings, placing markings on the ground six feet apart to encourage customer distancing, and requiring at least one fireworks booth staff member to remain outside to direct customers and to assure social distancing. Next slide, please. So some considerations. Some traveled, if we if we were to ban fireworks this year, the sales in Pacifica, there is possibility that some of our residents may travel to San Bruno to purchase fireworks, resulting in gatherings. And as you as I as you saw from the previous slide, San Bruno is continuing with the fireworks sales. These fireworks were purchased in San Bruno, would be bought, brought over to Pacifica, the gatherings would still occur. Although banning local fireworks may still decrease local gatherings. Many of the gatherings involve members of the same household celebrating with fireworks on their driveways and in the street. This is not, however, a violation of health orders when that occurs. You can gather with members of your own household. With or without our safe and sane fireworks, neighbor gatherings will still likely occur. Many of those gatherings, as we know all too well, involve illegal fireworks that will be present even without the safe and sane products. Also for consideration, it is unknown what the health order will read by July 4th regarding gatherings. It's unlikely that large gatherings will be allowed, but as you as you can tell, they're already starting to lose restrictions. We just don't know for sure what that will look like by July 4th. Prior to putting this report together, all fireworks permittees were contacted. We're told at this meeting, they were also told that if the fireworks program were to continue, they may be required to put in place social distancing safeguards, including having a staff member outside of their booth to assure that the customers are not crowding and are socially distancing. One of the fireworks groups pulled out from the process. And all of the other fireworks groups stated that if fireworks sales continued, they would be willing and able to comply with any regulations that were set forth by the city manager. Next slide, please. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions from council members.
Mike?
In regards to Lindemar Beach, are we still going to have the trailer out there that we usually have? You know, for July 4th? And then also, if we do, if the council decides to ban it on Lindemar, should we also consider banning it on Sharp Park and Rockaway Beach also?
So Councilmember Neil, currently, the only part of, the only area where fireworks are allowed on any beach is that small portion of Lindemar Beach that I spoke of. There you cannot shoot fireworks on Rockaway Beach, you can't shoot them on Sharp Park Beach. However, the parking lots in the Rockaway area, that's what we're, that's what we were discussing, I was discussing previously, that the city manager is going to plans to prohibit any fireworks at all in those areas. So there wouldn't be any fireworks at all in any of those areas.
Oh, okay.
As far as the command post goes, yes, the police department will continue to operate out of that parking lot at Lindemar Beach this year. It's a great location because that's where the majority of our activity is occurring. And just because fireworks will not be allowed on the beach doesn't mean we still don't have to staff the beach. Because we can, I can imagine there will be crowds out there, the Fourth of July happens to fall on a Saturday. I don't know if that makes much difference this year when a lot of people aren't going into work the next day, but we will, if even if we ban fireworks on Lindemar Beach, we're going to have to be out there enforcing it still.
Thank you.
Sue or Sue, or do you want me to ask a question?
That it's it's kind of interesting because I expected to get lots and lots of emails on this topic. I got two. One said, how dare you ban fireworks? And the other one said, how could you even consider allowing the fireworks? So it was an interesting toss-up. One of the things I was thinking about that weren't in your pros for selling fireworks are the fact that the the people who work in the booths do cleanup. They're supposed to do major cleanup the next day. And I can still see that we would still have a lot of trash and debris, even though they're not allowed on the beach. And that those people who work in the booths can still continue to do their cleanup because that's an important part of this, not just the money. And and I always bring up the money for the groups because this is, I've sold fireworks in booths for my kids for many, many, many years. And this was mainly the only way that these groups can can get their money to run their softball or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or or track or whatever it was. And it's really important to these groups. And I know you talked to each one. Did any of the, besides the one that backed out, since everyone was still all in favor of going forward, did you have any negative comments from any of the people who are considering running the booths?
No, I did not. They were very, very short with their answers and they were still on board and they want to and they would be willing to do what was asked of them.
Thank you.
Mike?
I have to admit, I did reach out to two or three of the groups and they were all yes. And as one of the groups mentioned to me, I mean, they actually have a building here in Pacifica. And they have had no rental income for the last two months. They yet they still have to pay their mortgage or if they have it, their insurance or utilities. And it is difficult. And I know my son's Boy Scout troop. This is 2008, this is what paid for quite a few of the boys to go to summer camp. And given the current economic situation, we know is coming down the road. I think the fireworks sales is probably going to, you know, have a major impact in that. But I do agree with Councilmember Vatalaus that the requirement that the groups that sell fireworks have to come to the beach the next day should still be a part of the agreement. And actually, one of the groups did mention to me is that, I guess Safeway is selling fireworks and yet they don't have a permit. And they also don't pay the 8%, but they also don't do beach cleanup. So I don't know if staff can address that or if we can do anything about it. So I just wanted to throw that in the pot also.
Councilmember Neil, we can, I can, we can take a look at that. Usually what you find, and again, not having visited Safeway myself recently there, I can't tell you for certain. But often what you see, even in some of our local stores, you'll see products with the TNT or Phantom, I mean, I think it's usually TNT. But they'll be the little poppers, they won't be the the real fireworks, the real igniting fireworks. I'm not saying that's not occurring this time, but usually it's, and I, because I've seen those and have looked at them myself, trying to figure out what they were doing. But it's usually the the non-lighting kind.
Yeah, I mean, I was over at Target and I saw they did have sparklers and stuff like that. And that's coma, we can't do anything about it. So, but it was a concern someone brought up to me.
Okay, we can, Sue Beckmeyer, do you have anything before we go, before we open the public?
I did. I would strongly support the suggestion that Councilmember Vatalaus said about the cleanups. But I was reflecting on some of the comments we heard earlier in this meeting from Lynn Adams from the Beach Coalition as to street litter. And I, so I'm not sure if, you know, since they're not doing cleanups right now, I don't know how we would orchestrate that exactly. But it's, we have plenty of time to figure it out if we decide to do that. So I think that's really important. And I think it's also really important to not have the beach parking lot piece, to not have the beach piece. I've been questioning that in general. So, you know, in terms of the the thing that pushes it over is the no gatherings or minimizing the amount of people in a certain square footage of space. To me, that's just a no-brainer. And for lots of other reasons, I'm not sure I really support that anyway. So it it made me happy to see that that was included in the staff report. I think that's all I had.
Okay, is there, has there been any thought given to if there were no, if 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 council were to agree to ban the sale of fireworks tonight, has there been any consideration given to how we would make up that deficit for paying PPD to be kind of on high alert that night?
No, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't discussed that. The only, prior to 20, I want to say 2008, if I remember correctly, 2017, 2008, it just came out of the general fund. Or just, it was just part of our general fund expenditures, whereas in after that, after I believe it was 2007 or 2008, when we went to the 8% fee, that's just paid for its sense.
Yeah. Kevin Woodhouse, city manager, you know, I think that expense of all of the overtime related to police and fire and public works would be a big enough ticket item that we'd probably need to tap into the general fund unallocated balance to cover that.
Yeah, okay. I think you make a really good point about people just going over the hill to San Bruno to get what they need and at a time where we need, we need to be generating tax revenue. That's a tough pill to swallow. I was, I'm bummed out, obviously, at some of the things that will be canceled, especially the Rocket Run, because I was going to volunteer to take up the last six feet of that race. That five-miler. But I hope that we can come up with some creative ways to to make up for for things like the Rocket Run that does generate revenue. And I'm using this as an example for maybe for, you know, the later part of my discussion, which is we, this weekend with the Pacifica runners, they did a virtual 5K Memorial Day. And we all signed waivers online and we all did our own 5K and recorded it and posted it on Facebook. And if they had asked us to pay to do that, I would have paid to do that. So that's a really good example of how, if we were to to put a hold on sales this year in Pacifica, how those organizations can think creatively with each other and with other organizations to how to get some of that money anyway, including the fire department. So Mike Perez, I know you're on the line and it's sort of off-topic, but that's one thing to think about. And I'd be willing to help spearhead that for the Rocket Run. For anything else, I would love to be part of brainstorming. And is it okay to open up to public comment now? Is everyone in agreement? I believe that's a yes from Clerk Coffee. But we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Thank you. I do have a number. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I do have a number of public comments on this item. And as a reminder, I will be limiting the public comment duration for each comment to three minutes. So I'll read in what I can for the lengthy comments. And the remainder of the comment will be submitted in written format to the council following the meeting.
And let me just remind everyone, if you have a comment, please email publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us.
Okay. So with that, I will begin reading in the public comments that have been received. The first public comment comes from Dennis Revelle. And Dennis Revelle states, Dear Mayor Martin and council members, since 1989, Revelle Communications has served as the Public Relations/Public Affairs Representative for American Promotional Events, Inc., in front of these TNT fireworks. The state's leading wholesale distributor of state fire marshal-approved fireworks. In addition, we assist TNT fireworks with its community liaison activities as well as the development and implementation of both local and statewide fireworks safety and education programs that it coordinates and or underwrites in conjunction with the local and state fire departments. We also assist our client as well as the State of California and many local communities with the collection, tabulation, and analysis of local fire and injury data as it relates to illegal, state-approved, and unknown fireworks, and act as a resource library for those same entities on emerging enforcement and public education techniques throughout the country as we all battle with the growing menacing problem of illegal fireworks. As can be seen from the attached email, he had provided several attachments to his email. And that's what he's referencing here. Dated May 15th, which Chief Stidle was copied on, to San Mateo County Health Services Chief Ms. Louise F. Rogers and San Mateo County Health Services Health Officer Dr. Scott Morrow. At the behest of 29 nonprofit organizations in San Mateo County, 16 in San Bruno and 13 in Pacifica, that our client and Phantom fireworks are proud to serve, we sought and presumably have gained the acceptable, sorry, the county health services approval of the TNT fireworks physical distancing protocol as an acceptable operation of fireworks stands by the San Mateo Non- as an acceptable operation of fireworks stands by the San Mateo nonprofit organizations. While it is attached to the email to Health Services, I have taken liberty of attaching an extra copy of that protocol for your easy review. And that's referencing another of the um, of the attachments. On uh, March nineteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Gavin Gavin Newsom, along with the California State Public Health Officer and Director of California Department of Public Health, Dr. Sonia Angle, placed into effect an executive order that until lifted or modified, governs all retail and wholesale operations in the state of California. That executive order empowers local county health authority. Sorry, uh officers to enforce as well as cite individuals, companies, and to develop their own protocols so long as they are consistent with the state's protocols. In on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, the governor laid out for four stages that the state will follow as it slowly removes the stay-at-home orders. That is the end of that um, time. Um, and I just wanted to summarize very quickly. The last paragraph, he's saying, we respectfully request that you continue to move forward and issue the permits to the thirteen Pacifica nonprofit organizations. Please be advised that these nonprofit organizations, as well as our client and this office, will be working with the city staff to amend, improve, or add the signage in our handouts that this city council and our city staff deem necessary. And I will provide the uh, full written comments to the council following the meeting, along with the attachments that he is referencing in his email. The next comment on this item comes from Diane Fenster. And she's uh, she states, I am writing to request that the so-called safe and sane fireworks that are sold in Pacifica only be allowed to be set off at the beaches where there is minimum threat of wildfires being started and less noise impact to to cause distress to people and animals. That way, the club's still getting their funding and people like myself aren't kept awake worrying if there's going to be a fire started. I live on Reichling and fireworks did did start a fire on our block a number of years ago. I'd also appreciate a more vigorous enforcement of no illegal fireworks for the same reasons as above. The majority of Pacifica residents should not be placed at the mercy of a few thrill seekers who get off on loud noise. We've all been through enough anxiety these past few months with the COVID nineteen pandemic. Thank you, Diane Fenster. The following comment um, comes from Bill Collins. Uh, Bill Collins states, Dear Councilmembers, you've heard of the Pacific Gyre. How much of that is Pacifica's contribution from fireworks and related debris washed to sea each night of July fourth, after the revelers have gone back home? It's time to walk the walk as the saying went, stop permitting the trashing of our beaches. Many practices are now disallowed at PSB. Smoking, camping overnight, littering, drinking alcohol, off-leash dogs, bonfires, et cetera. It is only because of the almighty dollar that fireworks are still allowed to trash our splendid beach. And that uh, is the end of the comment from Bill Collins. The next comment comes from Joseph Conroy. Uh, Joseph Conroy states, My name is Joseph Conroy, Pacifica resident for twenty-six years. I am requesting that the sale of fireworks this year be canceled. I know this has been a hot-button topic, but please hear me out. As you are well aware, the time we live in this is unprecedented. Think about this fact. More people have died from COVID nineteen in the US than soldiers died in the Korean and Vietnam wars combined. The COVID nineteen infection has done this in just four months and it continues to kill. The city of Pacifica has done a good job communicating shelter in place and has tried to dissuade beach use as we have all seen over the past couple of weekends, the huge number of people gathering, not wearing face masks nor social distancing at our beaches and going to and from. The efforts are noteworthy despite the result. People have sacrificed a lot so far. We can sacrifice not having fireworks this year. We know large crowds will gather both at beaches, parking lots, neighborhoods, many not wearing masks nor distancing all the while to set off fireworks, both legal and illegal. Numerous towns in California have stopped the practice. Petaluma is a nearby example. Petaluma is still there. I just as much want, as anyone, want things to be as normal as possible, but we all need to stay strong on what we as a group and individuals can do to minimize the spread of this infection. I had a response from one councilperson this week who asked me how the nonprofits would raise the ten thousand dollars they normally generate as well as the thirty thousand dollars for law enforcement. I was shocked that a dollar figure was placed on lives in order to, for fireworks to be sold. In response to some ideas, stands could sell gallon-sized lemonade. Life gives you gives you lemons, dot, dot, dot. And tea, sell baked goods, create and sell a coupon book for local business, a win-win. Have drawings for raffle prizes. How about a fifty-fifty raffle, T-shirt and sweatshirt sales, local restaurant and coffee shops, selling goods for take-home? Guess how many jelly beans in the jar? Point is to think outside the box. A bit of explaining the why goes a long way in people having to change behavior. Pacifica can explain the why of not selling fireworks this year and people will understand it involves lives this time around. You certainly do not need the additional stress on top of what people already have of illegal of legal and illegal fireworks going off during the day and night for several days. I encourage you to YouTube the Kaiser Permanente commercial, Let's Do The Right Thing. As a leader for the city of Pacifica, part of your role is the welfare of Pacificans that comes in many forms. But this year, this unique, never-ending year, we can forego fireworks. It may even save a life or several, and that Pacifica could be very proud of. Sincerely, Joseph Conroy. The following comment comes from Cindy Abbott. Cindy Abbott states, Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, the staff report on whether or not to allow the sale of safe and sane fireworks this year notes that there is a financial effective to not having the sales. In addition to the loss of revenue for the city that has, over the years, essentially covered the cost of additional police and fire resources for the Fourth of July holiday, representatives of nonprofit groups have shared that fireworks sales provide significant funding for their programs. These are different and difficult times, though. The concerns expressed about the community gathering around both the booths that sell and in places where neighbors gather to watch safe and sane fireworks are appropriate to have in light of the current health crisis. At the last meeting of city council, you took a useful step and approved fifty thousand dollars in funding for Pacifica businesses through the SMC Strong Fund. Additionally, there was discussion about how the annual contribution to the Pacifica Resource Center and Pacific Beach Coalition could be creatively funded for twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one. There are, though, many small nonprofits in our community that likely did not apply for the money through the fund that have had to cancel fundraisers already and are continuing to feel the impact of the loss of donations and or to event ticket sales. While I understand the budget pressure on the city of Pacifica, I am reaching out to ask that this conversation tonight, particularly if the sales are put on hold this year, consider support to nonprofit organizations as well. Nonprofits have filled the gap for decades, fulfilling needs for community members of all ages that the city of Pacifica and the school districts haven't been able to cover. Nonprofits are small businesses that support the economic vitality and social health of the city of Pacifica residents and visitors. Ideas for organizations that need assistance might include forgiveness for fees paid for the fields, event permit fees, rent paid to the city of Pacifica, and even monetary support coordinated through the SMC Strong Fund. Thank you for your consideration as you address the specific issue of Fourth of July events and how this discussion has broader implications. Respectfully, Cindy Abbott, West Chert Park. And I have a few additional comments that have been received during the meeting on this item. The following comment comes from um Jason Piccolotti, uh, head football coach for Terranova High School. Mr. Piccolotti states, the football program at Terranova High School is dependent on this as our main fundraiser. The JUHSD does not come close to supporting our program in terms of financial assistance. The money raised from fireworks each year allows us to get the necessary equipment to teach the kids the game safely. All of our coaches, twelve, except four, are paid with this money and we barely get by each year as we can't get new equipment until we fundraise through Safe and Same. Jason Piccolotti, head football coach, Terranova High School. And I have a comment uh, from Dan Stedjink. Uh, Dan Stedjink states the following. Dear Council, while the staff reports a recommended action of prohibit discharge of safe and sane fireworks on all portions of Lindemar Beach, the state of California will never again allow that activity to occur again on their beach. They were previously unaware it had occurred. The California Alcoholic Beverage Control has stated that the sales of fireworks is never compatible with holding an ABC license. Please do not set up fireworks sales at any locations holding an ABC license. San Mateo County has the largest, has the third highest COVID mortality rate in the state and is unlikely to allow twenty-twenty sales to occur in light of the thousands of people that visited Pacifica State Beach this weekend while shelter in place was in effect. Please place the issue of safe and sane fireworks sales on the November twenty twenty ballot. Either voters want fireworks sales or they don't. Thanks, Dan Stedjink. I'm just browsing for additional comments on this item. And I have the following comment from Lynn Adams, Pacific Beach Coalition. Lynn Adams states, again, I would like to say how sad I am to see all of the needed changes in these trying times and the same applies to our normal Fourth of July festivities. However, in light of the situation, I agree with the city manager to cancel all fireworks on the beaches and off-street parking in Pacifica. It is clearly not safe for groups of people to celebrate in this way this year. Perhaps this is a chance for us to see what the future will be like without all of the waste and toxins that are left behind for the ocean. On the plus side, the reduction of trash and toxins may just be another gift to ocean life much as the reduction of people driving has been to the atmosphere. Perhaps this is the year we can experience a Fourth of July in a different, more earth-friendly way. Celebrating with family at home using reusable and sustainable items, perhaps even making our celebration waste-free. I am hopeful that it is also a chance for nonprofits that rely on fireworks sales to explore other more earth-friendly options to replace this funding source. Lynn Adams, President, Pacific Beach Coalition. And the last public comment I have in this item is from Mike Trailer, President, Pacifica United Soccer Club. Mike Trailer states, Also, please consider that these groups also do beach cleanups as part of the permits that are issued. Families will still gather and this can open the door for more more illegal fireworks to happen. Thanks, Mike Trailer, President, Pacifica United Stock Soccer Club. And that concludes the public comments that I have received on item eight.
Okay, Mike, you're on mute.
Uh, a question, I guess, I don't know, for Chief Chief Stidle or the city manager. Recology usually puts a dumpster down on Lindemar Beach for, you know, fireworks waste and I in the past couple of years, I think they've even had one on Palmetto. Um, do you know if we ban the fireworks on Lindemar Beach, will they still have a dumpster? Because, you know, if it's in other parts of the city, perhaps people will dump it there. Just, do you have any idea? Because I don't think that's part of their franchise agreement. They do it out of goodwill.
Yeah, uh, we haven't specifically engaged that with recology at this point, but we certainly will after tonight's decision and we know the path forward. Um, you know, uh, like our public works department, I know recology staff uh, and and that business is completely taxed. It's a di- difficult time for them as well. Uh, but you know, we'll uh, get with them and and see what would make sense uh, in case uh, in locations where uh, the fireworks may still occur on on the streets, but not in the parking lots.
And would it be possible if recology is going to do it, because I know they're under no obligation to do it, that we require the um, nonprofits to put a sign, a large enough sign that it can be read that says um, you know, dumpster is available at wherever locations they go, Lindemar Beach or Palmetto or wherever?
I'm not familiar with what's been done in the past on that, but we should, can certainly discuss that with with nonprofits. Chief Chief, if you have uh, any, anything to add.
I know, we certainly haven't done in the past, but what we find is the nonprofits are usually pretty cooperative with us with our signage. We bring signage to them for different things. We bring trash signage to them with the garbage can guy, as we call it, e- every year, and they usually post whatever we ask them to.
Right. And I know they usually um, have a handout of some sort regarding, to be honest with you, I forget what it is. There is a handout. You walk out with your fireworks and the handout. So yeah, thank you.
Sue Varralas, do you have something? You look like you're
No, I mean, I I think it was interesting, of course, to hear both sides and um, I can't imagine. I mean, I'm I'm glad that we had suggestions, because in the past, no one has given us any suggestions. Um, I just don't see how we can cover the costs this year. And I think the nonprofits are suffering just like everybody else. And also, one of my main comments I got from the, one of the people was you know, we we haven't had any fun. Let us have fun. And fireworks are fun to a lot of people. To some people, they're not. Um, but they are a fun time and people get to, are together with their own families doing fireworks and having a good time. And and I think that's really important in these times when, when people are suffering, they need to have a good time too. So that's my comment.
Um.
I, is this, oh, sorry.
I really appreciated some of the comments, especially from Cindy Abbott, who proposed another creative solution to um, you know, the potential ban of fireworks for this year. And that would look like a group of, a community group coming together and coming up with creative solutions such as waving, you know, a- all of the football teams or the soccer teams coming together with the school district and they wave the fee on the field. Um, a lot of those, those teams already do their own maintenance on the field. Um, but I am still a proponent of coming up with creative solutions. We have to come up with creative solutions on how to operate at a deficit in our own homes for the last three months. It is going to be very uncomfortable. And I am a little bit um, it re- recreation is important. We don't even know what that's going to look like. We don't know what soccer is going to look like. We don't know what um, what football is going to look like, a highly contact sport. Um, so, you know, my, my thought is that this is a pilot year. The you know, one of the best and worst quotes is never let a good crisis go to waste. We could use this as our pilot year for something that we've been talking about as a council since two thousand and seven, even though I haven't been on council, but since I've been following. Even before that, I know, Mike, you have a lot of history with it too. So uh, my, my recommendation is that we all are living right here where we are right now. Let's come up with something really creative. We've done virtual graduations. We've done virtual fundraisers. We've I mean, you know, we're all operating at a deficit, so it's going to be a little bit more, you know, work and it's going to be a little bit painful, but we're all learning a really good skill right now. And um, and I'm not going to tell you what your skill is. Mine is not patience. But it is creativity because I've had to get really creative and, 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 and operate at a very uncomfortable environment in my own home. And so I'm very passionate about the idea that we can continue to come together as a community and think of ways to close the deficit for those fundraisers and use this as a pilot because it, it, it pains me to hear how reliant we are on that money. There's no Plan B. There's no Plan B. And so we all came up with a Plan B in the last two and a half months, didn't we? We made it work. We're still here. We're still eating. So there's, there's a way. And, and my, my recommendation is just, just to come up with something that's creative, get together with others. I'm here. I'd love to brainstorm some of these ideas. I'm not a whiz, but they're, they're, you know, like I said, that virtual rocket, I mean, that virtual Memorial Day, that was a huge success. I, I'm, I'm think we had like fifty to seventy people sign up. And if, and if we all had to sign up for forty bucks a pop, that would be a chunk, you know, and, um, you know, I, I just, anyway. I'm open to emotion unless anyone has anything else. I, I also, sorry, I never had, never commented on the litter thing. You all know I leave my beach cleanup every month and I have not been at Char Park and that pains me. And we also do a very large July fifth cleanup where we all at our sites do an extra cleanup that month. And, and, and it sounds like it's easy, but it, it's not because we all also have lives too. So we, we also look forward to that because it, it helps keep, you know, the cleaner the beaches are, the cleaner they stay. So, it's doable, you know, you, you have the opportunity to be physically distant on a beach and in those types of areas. It's doable, but I, yeah, obviously I think it still should be claimed regardless. And I support your recommendation, Chief, on, you know, the, the banning of fireworks and gathering in locations that you named.
Um, chief, if we do ban the block parties and don't issue the permits, the enforcement, that's really going to be kind of nasty. I mean, you've got, you know, basically a tradition in Pacifica we're slapping, clamping down on. And I realize there's a lot of traditions going by the wayside the past few months and in the future. Do, or do you think the police are prepared to be, you know, you know, you know, the reaction of the public to stopping their party in their block? Especially those courts in Lindemar?
In, uh, every year, I would say that we break up more block parties than we actually have permits for. I, in that they throw up, they just try to close the streets down themselves. And, and to the best of our ability, we close those down because usually they close them down in a fashion that the fire department usually wouldn't agree with. And that presents law enforcement concerns when they, when they, when we have the permit program, it has to be approved by me, who takes several different things into consideration. When we approve the permit and I make alterations to some of the closures before I issue the permit sometime. We always, in any situation on July fourth, we have to take safety into consideration. So you take it on a case-by-case basis. And we make a decision at the time depending on what we're looking at. Are, are we going to start? Are, are we going, are we willing to start a riot over a, over a block party? That's probably not going to happen. But like I said, we break up several or open up the roadways for several block parties that are not permitted in any given Fourth of July. And taking that into consideration, I, I did consider when the city manager and I spoke about this, your very point right there. The issue that I had with specifically when talking to the city manager with issuing the block party permits is right now, and I, I, I would have a hard time believing by July fourth that we would be in a position where we would be saying or where the, the health orders would say you can gather, you could start having large gatherings. How is it as the, as the police chief that I could recommend issuing a chief, a permit signed by the police chief saying that I'm authorizing a large gathering when the health order says you can't? If it happens, it happens and we have to deal with it when it happens, but it's very difficult to, you know, I find it very difficult to actually sign my name to something like that right now.
Good point, but I see the lawyers arrived.
That's all that too.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to jump on and say that, you know, any issue that's ordered by, any order that's issued by the city manager through his directory powers would be consistent with the county health orders and the state orders. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear that the steps that the city manager takes as Director of Emergency Services to issue his orders would be consistent with what is already out there for purposes of health and safety.
Is this an action item where you need a motion or is it just sense of the council? I didn't see action item on the agenda, so.
No, this is just a directional item on the issue of the Safe and Same Firework Sales Permit Program. The other items that were identified in the staff report, the city manager as Director of Emergency Services intends to move forward and issue an order that would come back to council for ratification.
But I, I do need a direction from the council regarding the sale of Safe and Same.
Yeah, I have, this requires a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the regulation or the suggestions of the city staff and allow the sale of Safe and Same in Pacifica.
This council member, O'Neil, this, I, I'm looking at the staff report. I hate to interrupt, but it just says to discuss and provide direction.
Right, I saw that too, but Deirdre said that she saw it needed action, so that's why I was making a motion.
I have a note here just saying that it requires a motion and a second interval call vote.
I, I can get direction by, by head nods or, or, or a vote. I don't, whatever the, the preference is, but on, on the second part regarding the sale of, of the Safe and Same, that's what I'm seeking direction regarding.
And just to jump in, I think that a, a vote would kind of send the, the clear message to the city manager about the action that is being requested of.
I make, I make a motion that we allow the sale of Safe and Same fireworks this July.
Second.
Roll call vote.
The vote is taken. There, there, that item was not specifically on the agenda. And so my concern is that making a vote on the agenda and an item that's not agendized would be a violation of the Brown Act. So I think city manager Woodhouse can get the direction that he needs from council just by everybody indicating where they stand on the Safe and Same Firework Sales Program.
Okay.
Other than taking a vote.
I'm okay allowing Safe and Same fireworks.
I am also okaying Safe and Same fireworks. I'm going to say that we've had twenty years to come up with suggestions for the groups and we never do. So I don't see having suggestions for groups in a very short one and a half month time period.
I support the sale of Safe and Same this year, recognizing the caveats that Chief Stidle and city manager would have, have placed about where we're not lighting them off, et cetera.
I wish that people would come up with more creative ways to raise funds and not rely on the sale of fireworks that litter our earth and require massive amounts of regulation and cleanup. Therefore, I think we could use this as a wonderful opportunity to come up with those ways. And it's unfortunate that we don't have majority, but that also feels that way. But what I would like to offer is that the one organization that bowed out, if you could connect me with them, I'd love to try to help them virtually fundraise and knock the socks off of everyone else who sold the fireworks.
Do it. That would be great.
Uh, in addition, I think you probably got enough consensus on the recommendation to not allow low lighting of fireworks on any of our beaches that currently allow it, as well as open spaces that currently allow it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm fine on that. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to sell them. We're not going to allow them where they were typically allowed. They're still allowed out front of your house and things like that. As long as they're not illegal. If they're on the ground, then they're legal. So they are legal. So, okay.
And we're still going to have the cleanup the next day.
Yes.
On the beach.
Or somewhere.
Beach streets, we don't care. We, we, we will, we will, the Beach Coalition will do our best to step in and lead with whatever precautions we need to take. I, I think, I'm, I'm not speaking for them, but, you know, they're willing to help as they have in the past, I'm sure. As am I. Okay, you have, you have the direction?
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Okay, we will move on to item number nine. This is the coronavirus response actions, city restoration of operations plan. That's R O O P, the ROOP. We're going to receive an update on the city's response to the coronavirus health crisis and development of the city restoration of operations plan, otherwise known as the ROOP. Raise the ROOP. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager, and I'm going to tag team this presentation with Assistant City Manager Hines, as well as Human Resources Manager Leah Maxud. And what I want to start with here is, you know, we are ten weeks into shelter in place and we're more like fourteen weeks in to the city's active response to this pandemic. And it's been, as the council knows and everyone is aware, it's been an ever-changing and evolving challenge. But to say it has been a challenge for everyone is a complete understatement. I, I don't want to underemphasize that this pandemic has been really difficult for everyone. It's been difficult for the city organization. It's been difficult for council members. It's been difficult for the community members and the businesses and just everyone. And with uncertainty and fear, it's nothing like we've ever seen before. And the point that we're at in this pandemic right now, in my opinion, is maybe even more challenging than it was eight weeks ago. Because the economic realities are, are setting in. There's, there's a sense that we're moving towards reopening in some form or moving from a phase one to a phase two. Lots of questions about what that means. And the complex challenge that we have right now as a city organization is bringing together what we're calling the, the, the ROOP, the Restoration of Operations Plan. And I, I wanted to really specifically agendize this, this item for, for council discussion and, and for the public's knowledge and information. And you're going to hear a fairly lengthy presentation and then we'll have, there's a few kind of higher priority topics the council may want to discuss. You don't have to vote on it, but I, I, I want to get a sense of the council on a few of the items at the end. You know, just this last weekend, there were over a hundred new cases of coronavirus in San Mateo County. So while the daily cases aren't as large as they used to be, there still are a lot of new cases and, and deaths that are occurring. So I'm, I'm going to just touch on a little bit of background here and then turn it over to Assistant Manager Hines as we dive into this. Next slide, please. So the, the purpose of the ROOP, well, the purpose tonight is to receive this update about our, generally about the city's response to this health crisis and really describe what a ROOP is about. And, uh, next slide, please. Just diving into, to the ROOP, again, the Restoration of Operations Plan, and from here forward, I'll use the, the acronym. What, what I'm envisioning here is that this is a fairly comprehensive and, and complex document. We, what you see here is a list of the different components of the plan. The heart of the plan, if you go down to the, the, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, sixth bullet, the Departmental Operation Plan and Risk Considerations. That's really the heart of the plan. But, but the plan with the background discussion, the regulatory structure of health crisis response, the regional, state and federal inter collaborations that have been occurring and are complex, the financial impacts to the city, as well as all of these other components, is really putting together a new emergency operations plan related to pandemic for the city. So that a year from now, two years from now, if a new pandemic or a resurgence of this pandemic happens again, and many of the team players in the city are not here right now, we'll have a working plan to look at, to look back on and say, oh, this is the experience we went through that was so challenging at that time. So there's, there's really multiple components and underlying the purpose of the ROOP. It's to be a guidebook for what we need to do. The questions we need to get answered now, the thresholds for decision-making. It's necessary for reopening operations. But it's also a guidebook to explain how complex each of these considerations is. It was mentioned earlier that, you know, we're receiving inquiries about opening the skate park, for example. That's not just something we can decide and do immediately. There's a very complex evaluation based, based on, on health factors and, and actively managing that, that we need to go through. So, and that applies to many, many city programs and processes. So before I continue on, a couple of weeks ago, I requested that Leah Maxud, our Human Resources Manager, spearhead the ROOP team. And there's a representative from every department in the city that has been working really hard over the last couple of weeks to begin putting the ROOP together. So you'll, you'll see fruits of their work tonight. And the, the ROOP plan itself is also an evolving and working document. So you're going to see samples from the ROOP tonight, but you're, but the, the plan itself will be, you know, the draft and it, and it's a working document will be published on the website in the near future. It's not currently. But I did just want to take a minute to thank Leia from Human Resources, City Clerk Sarah Coffey, these are all the ROOP team members, Executive Assistant and Deputy Clerk Elizabeth Brooks, and Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines from Fire, Matt Powers, from Parks, Beaches and Recreation, Beth Phipps, from PD, Chris Clements, from Planning, Josh Montemeyer, and from Public Works Field Services, Paul Laberini, and from Public Works Wastewater, Ray Mendez. So it's been a, it's been a good opportunity for this team to work inter collaboratively and, and develop the content of the ROOP. Uh, next slide, please. I, I covered some of this, so I won't, I won't go into it as much, but again, it's a, the ROOP is a guidebook for us. And it's a tool to communicate to the public about the complexity of, of this decision-making hierarchy that we need to go through. Uh, and it allows for transparency to the community to, to understand all of those procedures and methods and some of the background, you know, regulatory framework, et cetera. With that, I, I think I covered the intro comments that I wanted to make and I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Hines.
Great. Hello, everybody. I'm Lorenzo Hines, Assistant City Manager. As Kevin's touched on, we'll start with the sort of the purpose of the document is to provide consideration and overviews to the public regarding our Restoration of Operations Plan. is to provide consideration and overviews uh, to the public regarding our Restoration of Operations Plan. Uh, the plan has been developed to analyze the essential public-facing functions. And our goal here is to provide uh, maximum transparency amongst the community to, so everyone can see the procedures and measures that we went through, uh, which sort of increased the increasing functionality um, while we're remaining flexible to address changes as they come down the pipe. Next slide, please. So I'll give a little history here. In January of 2020, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention announced uh, the first confirmed uh, coronavirus case in the U.S. Uh, and in the weeks since, he- health officials have confirmed hundreds of thousands of cases. As of May twentieth, uh, May twenty twenty, the number of confirmed COVID cases here within San Mateo County is approximately eighteen hundred with um, uh, confirmed deaths nearing one hundred. Um, I was watching CBS News this evening and on a national basis, uh, the reported cases are close to one point seven million. And on a national basis, the reported number of deaths is ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred. So we are nearing uh, the hundred thousand mark. Next slide, please. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Newsom issued the executive order N thirty-three dash twenty, which required that non-essential businesses close and that non-essential government employees remain in their homes um, or place of residence and not, and not report to work. On May fourth, Governor Newsom announced that, beginning on May eighth, the state would beginning, would begin to enter Stage Two of the state's resilience roadmap and begin the process of reopening the state. We will touch on the resilience roadmap and um, some slides that are upcoming. Next slide, please. So the next section of the ROOP deals with the regulatory structure of the health crisis and our response. And so over the last ten or so weeks, we have dealt with a number of orders from various uh, various orders and regulations that have been released by various levels of government uh, during this pandemic. Um, at a minimum, the cities must strive to ensure that it complies with federal, state, and local workplace requirements. At the same time, the city and other employers have to balance the return to work, return to onsite work and opening up to customers with health and safety of their workers and customers in mind. In response to these requirements, the city has created various protocols and guidances to combat the pandemic. And in doing so, we've also provided reasonable notice to our affected labor representatives as well, and they have been very cooperative. Next slide. Uh, next slide, thanks. Uh, let's go, let's go back one slide. All right, so from uh, the state level, uh, the state has identified that there are six indicators for modifying the stay-at-home order, which was issued back on uh, May fourth. Um, I'm sorry, back in March of um, twenty, uh, March of twenty twenty. Um, the ability to test, contact, trace, isolate, and support the exposed. And so, and the ability to protect those at high risk. We also much have surge capacity for hospital and health systems. Uh, there also needs to be therapeutic developments to meet the demand. Uh, the ability of businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing and the determination of when to reinstitute measures uh, like the stay-at-home measure. And so these are all things that are indicators for modifying and uh, the stay-at-home order and, and also allowing us to move from the different stages of the stay-at-home uh, order. Uh, next slide, please. Before the city, now we've talked about the state, but before the city can reopen facilities and public-facing services, we'll have to perform a detailed risk assessment and implement a site-specific protection plan. We've gotta train our employees on how to limit the spread of COVID nineteen, including how to screen themselves for symptoms and stay home if they have. Um, we also need to implement individual control measures and screening. We're also um, implementing disinfecting protocols and physical distancing guidelines. And we also have to abide by industry-specific guidelines and regulations. These steps will be reevaluated, evaluated at each stage as we move um, from uh, a tight shutdown to reopening uh, the city fully. Next slide, please. So the pandemic such as COVID has no borders and it's hard for us to address through individual or isolated country responses. Uh, this is a worldwide epidemic. So we'll cook, our coordinating government policies can make the crisis more effective because solutions often require inputs from a number of countries, including the flow of goods and expertise. In a next, in an effort, in an effort to streamline and protect our community, the city has successfully collaborated with neighboring entities, schools, cities, and counties, and private businesses to ensure a safe and smooth reopening plan. Next slide, please. We'll talk a little bit about the financial impacts. And this, uh, I briefed council on the financial impact when we presented the narrative budgets, uh, narrative budget uh, some, some weeks ago. But um, this bears repeating. So as a result of the pandemic and its effect on city operations, uh, we have seen deficits in both in the current year, uh, fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty, and fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty-one. And the revenues are down approximately one point seven and one point six million in those years respectively. We were able to address the gap in the, in the current year and we did it through a combination of expenditure reductions, uh, project delays for projects that weren't yet implemented, and utilization of reserves. For the budget year, the budget that's currently before you, um, the gap has been addressed by using our budget strategies, on utilization of reserves, utilization of our ERAF allocation. We're gonna do a comprehensive mid-year uh, budget assessment. Um, we're gonna modify the status of cannabis revenues uh, because they have become more viable. We provided economic stimulus for Pacifica businesses, or at least we have um, gone down that road. Um, we're deferring vehicle replacement funding. Um, hiring, we're doing a hiring freeze and possible reclassifications. We're doing reductions in operational budgets and we will pursue vigorously federal and state relief from the coronavirus impacts. And so we, as a city, will remain vigilant in monitoring the financial impacts of the current pandemic and we will take the appropriate actions necessary to maintain a balanced budget. Next slide, please. And so now we move into the Departmental Operational Plan and Risk Considerations. The ROOP outline is, and Lea Maxoud, our Human Resources Manager, is going to take you through the structure of each uh, departmental, not, not each departmental, but to take you through the structure of a couple of departmental uh, operation plans, just so you can see how they're put together. And our plan is to have this document out on the website before week's end. But I wanted to give you a little background as to why they're structured the way they're structured. So as the city of Pacifica moves toward reopening our operations, we anticipate reopening in four stages consistent with the state of California and San Mateo County's public health orders. And so the resilience roadmap that you see at the bottom of this slide is the same roadmap that you'll find um, that the governor has patterned all of his reopening activities after. And that there is Stage One through Four and Stage One being the most constrained and Stage Four being the end of the stay-at-home order. Next slide. So generally, the first stage is where we're at, what we've been doing. Um, it's one of crisis management and with the goal of saving as many lives as possible. The second stage that we'll be moving into aims to transition Pacifica residents and businesses back to a, a new normal uh, through gradual reopening uh, while always ensuring there's adequate safety measures in place. Third stage, city will transition to a state of monitoring and we aim to reopen additional features of the city with some restrictions still in place. Fourth and final stage, therapeutics will be in place and the city will be fully reopened and, and we can turn our attention to reimagining um, ourself post-pandemic. Uh, the stages ultimately become increasingly less restrictive as they progress. Next slide. So each departmental section is formatted to transparently demonstrate the city's adherence to the governor's resiliency roadmap. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to Lea Maxoud, our HR manager, and she's gonna take you through a couple of department uh, operational plans, just so you can see how they're structured, and then I'll come back and finish the um, PowerPoint. Are there any questions so far while we're queuing up the next document? All right, very good, very good.
Hello, everybody, my name is Lea Maxoud and I'm the Human Resources Manager. I'm gonna walk you through our ROOP plan for the department as Lorenzo had discussed. I'll wait.
Yeah, we're waiting for Sarah to queue up. There we go. Thank you, thank you, uh, City Clerk Coffey.
So departments have developed tentative plans for how to restore services utilizing the four-phase model which Lorenzo had touched on. Each department has a unique mission. Some uniform policies will apply similarly across departments, but then again, it'll depend on the specific department and the duties that they carry out as well, too. Departments have provided an overview of high-profile current services and a phased plan approach, which is what we will be showing there on page twelve. As you can see, the Administrative Services Department and City Manager's Office, um, we provide a background of our department and what it entails and then dive into the specific division functions which um, which would directly affect public-facing services provided to community members. For example, under the Finance Division, you'll see under City Business, core financial services have continued without interruption with the exception of the Finance Counter being close to the public. All other services are continuing, um, including business licenses with, which are now conducted electronically and it also provides guidance on where that type of information can be found. That's a similar breakdown of most of the divisions as well, too. Same thing as we'll see with information and technology. Same thing with human resources. If you can scroll down to page twelve, please. Recruitments, critical recruitments are continuing and we are moving towards a virtual format and have instilled a soft hiring freeze of non-critical positions, but are, continue to move forward with critical positions. In addition, other things that we're working on, policy review, labor relations. It also provides guidance on the modifications that have been made. If we, as you see, um, towards the bottom of the page, we get into the phased ROOP plan. Phase One, the safety and preparedness and all the various steps that the city is taking in relation to that within the Administrative Services Department. Again, this is a working document. For the purpose of this meeting, we tried to focus on the important public-facing services. In addition, we focus on the Phase One and Phase Two.
Excuse me, um, Leah, would you, whoever's operating uh, the uh, presentation, could you zoom in to hundred percent or down at the bottom right there?
Thank, thank you, Deirdre.
Okay, hopefully that's a little more logical. Thanks.
And as we continue to scroll down, we'll see the breakdown of the different phases uh, through the department. Phase Two to Phase Three to Phase Four. Uh, in addition, you'll see City Clerk's Office in a similar format. Clerk Coffey addresses all the major areas, provides a little summary of the current status and some basic considerations of what we anticipate as we move towards the different phases within this. Uh, in addition, you'll see her phase, the phase plan for the City Clerk's Office and that's a similar format for all the departments, which we have followed as well, too, with the goal providing the transparency, having it documented for future references, well, to creating our playbook. But keeping in mind that this will continue to change as new developments arise as well, too. Thank you, now I'll turn it back to Lorenzo Hines.
Thank you, Lea. And um, City Clerk Coffey, if you could um, requeue up the PowerPoint, I'd appreciate that. So we wanted to make sure that you saw how the individual uh, operational plans were structured. And again, uh, the goal is to make sure it's clear and it's transparent. And for any third party looking at this, they'll see that we followed the governor's roadmap and that structure uh, to the letter. So now that we've talked about the departmental plans, we're gonna talk about, the next section of the ROOP deals with the physical facility assessments. And so prior to reopening facilities and programs to the public, we've gotta conduct a detailed risk assessment, which will entail a physical uh, facility assessment in relation to the regulatory guidelines that um, that the city has to adhere to. There's also engineering controls, which involve isolating employees from work-related hazards. Um, and workplaces, um, where they're appropriate, these types of controls will reduce exposure to hazards um, without relying on worker behavior and, and can be the most cost-effective. And some of these controls con- consist of considering maximum occupancy when abiding by social distancing protocol, uh, marking social distancing requirements on the flooring of our offices. Uh, next slide, please. One-way pedestrian traffic and hallways, uh, plexiglass barriers when practical, uh, limiting seating in public areas to allow for social distancing, assessing restroom access limitations, uh, considering accessibility for hand sanitizer stations, installing high-efficiency air filters if practical, um, and restricting access to conference rooms uh, to maintain social distancing. Close common areas where personnel and the public are likely to congregate and interact. So these are uh, some of the items that we're looking at um, to uh, uh, when, as we do our facilities assessment. Next slide, please. Now we move to a discussion on personal protective equipment or PPE. And this includes gloves, goggles, face shields, face masks, respiratory protection um, when appropriate. Uh, during the outbreak of the infectious diseases, uh, the recommendations for PP, PPE specific to occupations or job tasks may change uh, depending on a geographic location. And so we'll be keeping an eye on that. The city of Pacifica will continue to monitor state and federal occupational safety and health administrative, administration and CDC websites to regularly update um, our recommended PPE. Next slide, please. So the PPEs will be selected based on the hazards of the worker. Um, we'll make sure that it's properly fitted and periodically refitted, consistently and properly worn when required, uh, regularly inspected, maintained, and replaced as necessary and properly removed, cleaned, and stored and disposed of um, uh, as per the requirements of that, that particular piece of equipment. We'll continue to provide our employees with PPE needed to keep them safe while performing their jobs. Next slide, please. And so we move to the COVID-related city policies to be developed. And so we move to the COVID-related city policies to be developed. And these policies include site-specific guidelines for the public and employees, cleaning and disinfecting the workplace, social distancing and the individual responsibility in the workplace, testing agency employees for the virus, temperature testing and screening uh for symptoms associated with the virus and use and disclosure of confidential medical information related to COVID-19. Next slide, please. We'll also be looking at policies that regarding the accommodation of employees who are at risk of severe illness. Uh, we'll also be looking at employee leave and compensation under the Families First, Families First uh Coronavirus Response Act. And also we'll be looking at telework and alternate work schedules, because we've definitely proven over the past 10 years that the city staff can work remotely and still be very successful and very productive at our particular duties. Next slide, please. And so now I'm gonna turn it back over to City Manager Woodhouse, and we're gonna talk about some of the high-profile phase one slash phase two group topics uh that are before you tonight.
Great. Thank you, Lorenzo. Um, the the four topics that that I had listed that the council may want to discuss relate to how we're currently doing public input at meetings and and what the future of that may look at, uh look like. The second topic relates to uh important city business items in the context of how we are doing public input at our meetings. Because as you remember, it was the the council's preference that a lot of our more uh hot topic items, we were gonna delay until we can have in-person public meetings. We're entering into a time where we don't know when we're gonna have in-person public meetings. So maybe we talk a little bit about that. The third relates to beach parking and changes there. And then the final uh item that's pertinent as we enter into summertime are parks and recreation programs. Before I sort of dive into those topics, though, this would be a good time to uh pause and just see if there's any questions or comments just generally about the the route, structure, purpose, content of it. You saw a sampling of the level of detail that's going into the report, which will be made available to the council and publicly made available. And as we move along and there's these different uh points of decision-making there, we may need to bring additional topics back to the city council in the future, but for now, are there kind of questions generally about the route before we sort of talk about these phase one to phase two transition topics? No? Okay. Great, so um, as you know, right now, with these meetings, which are focused on essential business items, uh, the public input is via email, real-time or in advance of the meeting. There are a number of cities in the county that are doing verbal, real-time, public input in the virtual Zoom setting. And I just wanted to raise the topic and get, again, we're not, we're not voting on this item or anything, but it's a good opportunity for the council uh to discuss the topic of public input. And City Clerk Coffee has done a bit of research um and can summarize what she's found with different uh cities around the county and how they're conducting their public input. And uh, you know, depending on on the council member comments, um, we can, if we, if we need to uh move into more research about options for public input or transitioning, um, we can uh conduct that research in the future.
Yes, um, I've reached out and uh received information from neighboring cities within the county and there are various methods of conducting their virtual meetings and receiving public input. It uh, it runs the gamut from um cities that are conducting meetings similarly to ours, such as Belmont, where um they are using a Zoom meeting where only the uh council members and staff are connecting directly with Zoom. And for the public uh participation, the public is able to view the meetings broadcast on the local TV station and live-streamed. And the public is able to submit comments um by email to the City Clerk before and during the meeting. Belmont is one of the cities where um they actually are um in keeping a physical location that has staff only, but uh all the council members are participating by video conference via Zoom. And um, I'm not sure whether um any public members have uh taken the opportunity to do a live comment at um the physical location yet. Um, Milbrae similarly um is allowing um is operating with Zoom and allowing comments such as ours by um by uh email. Um, and they had one public hearing where they allowed a comment by phone, but they're not allowing the uh public to participate directly in the Zoom um as of yet. Uh, and Brisbane is conducting theirs similarly as well. Uh, there are um a number of cities, um, there's at least four neighboring city, cities where they are allowing a direct public access via Zoom as well as uh broadcasting their uh meetings on uh TV and live-streamed. Um, and for the public that's connecting via Zoom, those uh, those four cities are allowing the public to connect with audio only with no video. Um, so they are receiving audio comments without video. Um, there's a, there's a mechanism where they can use the raise hand feature to indicate that they'd like to comment using the star nine feature on the phone. Um, there's uh, so, so those cities that are doing that, um San Bruno, Hafnun Bay, San Mateo, San Carlos are using um that feature and using the Zoom uh webinar platform to uh to allow the public uh access to their meetings. Um, East Palo Alto is allowing public participation uh directly via Zoom webinar and allowing both uh audio and video um for the public participating uh with comments. Um, Brillingame and Portola Valley, um, uh, they are allowing public via Zoom webinar to uh to connect as well. I was not certain if um they are allowing video on their um feed, but they're at least allowing um audio uh via Zoom as well. And most of these cities are also allowing written comments either up to a certain point on the day of the meeting, some as early as four o'clock and cutting it off there. Some are monitoring um emails um during the meeting. There's one city that I uh aware of that is even allowing text submissions of comments to be uh during the meeting. Um, Menlo Park is uh is an option where they are allowing public via their uh Zoom webinar, but they are allowing recorded audio. Um, so like a voice message that they would play back during the meeting or um the option for cities or for the public to request a call back during the meeting and for their audio input, uh they, they would call uh the person at the time that their public comment, so like calling the speaker up to the podium during the meeting. So those are some of the uh variations that are being used by neighboring cities in our county for public participation in virtual meetings.
Thank you, Sarah. So, uh, you know, this topic, I think, uh, for for council's discussion, there's a lot of details and nuances about different ways that things could be conducted, but a a basic uh framing uh would be the difference between the real-time emailing and comments that are read into the record versus a verbal, you know, audio uh participation in a Zoom setting, for example. So um, if the council has any, any comments or thoughts uh regarding uh those issues. Again, the importance of this, you'll see in the next item as we move, as shelter in place continues on, or at least at least prohibitions against gathering of of individuals, I mean, gathering of of groups. Maybe that's redundant, but uh, um, you know, the the form of public comment becomes important.
Um. Question? Deirdre? Do, all these, the different formats, um, does it allow that if someone's really starts, you know, going off and doing, you know, going over the three minutes? Is it possible for the staff to cut off the three minutes, you know, at three minutes? So do you follow what I mean? Because we do have instances where people get up there and they just continue on when um they're over their three minutes.
Yes, there are various uh features of the platforms that allow the the ho, the meeting host, which would be a city staff member to um to either uh limit comments by uh muting the individual once they've gone over their time limit. And if uh there is, there does happen to be some member of the public that is extremely disruptive to the point that um they need to be uh removed from a virtual meeting, uh either sharing inappropriate content or becoming um completely disruptive to the meeting. The council can choose to take a recess. Uh, there are options to remove individuals from uh the meeting platform as well.
I mean, this is just my opinion is I'm, I have to admit, I kind of miss the in-person meetings. I like those better and the public comments in person and stuff. However, I understand where we're at now, and but the governor can change these rules at any moment. But I'm not comfortable having staff there receiving public input and the council's all virtual. It's kind of, I don't think that's fair to staff to expose them. But I do like the idea of the public having a place they could come to. So I know it's kind of contradictory, but um, and I'm not, I'm not real keen on texts, you know, comments or three-minute stuff. I, I'm kind of reluctant for that, but the emails and audio, if we can, get at least get audio would be good.
Sue? Um, I agree with your last point there, Mike. Um, I think I would actually like to request that we obtain the ability to accept audio comment. Especially as um City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, we're getting to the point where we can't avoid all the business that we kind of set aside. Um, because we don't know how long this is gonna go on, even if we do get back to a physical meeting format as we had pre-COVID. We don't know if that might change again. So in light of the earlier comments about this whole route plan and how it's something that, you know, is needed for now, but it will also form the basis of any time we need it in the future, um, I really do think giving people an opportunity to voice their own comment in their own voice would be um another step toward um improving the opportunity for public comment.
I think continuing to email would be appropriate, though, also. So audio and email, but I'm, I'm not real fond of getting texts.
Yes, I agree. I didn't mean to leave out email, and I like the idea of email even during the meeting, which um our City Clerk and Assistant City Clerk have done an excellent job of managing over our many meetings.
Hey. Sue, you dropped off my.
I'll just speak on Zoom.
Yeah, I can't, I can't hear, I can't see you anymore, so.
You can't even, can you see me now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll just keep speaking. Um, if, I wouldn't be, I would not object to having people on Zoom with their faces and letting them speak as long as it's controlled and that they can be shut off, just like we can shut them off in a, in a regular in-person meeting. You flip the switch and they're done. Um, I, I think people would be happier if we could at least see them and see their expressions. It's nice, I mean, it's great that Sarah can read them, but sometimes your tone makes a big difference. And listening to what people have to say makes a big difference.
The one issue, the issue I would have with that, and this is in speaking to the school districts, is the um the resources some people have out there to do that. So I ju, I think that we can't, you know, if we could have, continue to have Sarah read stuff, but if someone wants to have some sort of option to do audio only or audio and video, yes, but then I think there has to be a decision made during the prep time when you call on Jane Doe. That's when the three minutes start or until they fumble onto Zoom and we can see them, okay? Because it's just having the comments for people in the schools about the technical challenge of internet connectivity, speed of internet connectivity, quality of the equipment they have, being, you know, it's comments I have about it.
If I might chime in there, I think uh Councilmember O'Neil, you you are right uh regarding the equity issue and I think maybe only one city in the county actually allows the video participation. Sir, Clerk, City Clerk Coffee could correct me on that, but um, you know, with audio, it's equitable for someone who is just using their phone on Zoom, because you can call in on your phone and he heard, your voice heard. But um uh, or from a landline phone, not even from a mobile phone, so it's it's equitable that way.
I mean, could you, you could, with a phone, you could see, be watching it on TV and granted, there's a tape delay, but then if you have the phone number there, they could call in and get in the queue with just a phone. Well, if you only have computer, you know, um Zoom in there, I think that gets into some equity issues.
Well, um, no, I'm not opposed to opening up to Zoom as long as it's properly managed. Um, we are all on county calls. At one point, we were on five days a week with over 120 attendees. And they had one person managing the the system, doing, you know, uh unmuting people, unmuting people, allowing people to raise their hands. Um, I don't know if the raising hand function is allowable. I think we sort of, we would have to research that with City Attorney, but um, so if we were to offer that option via Zoom, but also for your Zoom calls, you send out the audio option. You just have to be um really clear about how to use that functionality. I don't know how it works with landlines, um, and I suspect that there would be uh quite a few people calling in from landlines in Pacifica. So I'm absolutely open to exploring um this and soon. I think we had um, uh, at least two really hot-topic items at the Planning Commission meeting last week and um, there were a lot of emails saying, how can you possibly have this meeting when we can't properly participate? People want to hear their voices, like, like every one of you said that. They want to hear their own voice. They want to say their words. They want to speak with passion. I certainly do. I would not want my comment read and you can speed it up or slow it down and fit it all in or not. And it's um, we are, we're doing our community a disservice, not exploring our opportunities. So I'm hoping that in the next maybe two meetings, we can figure out a way to to have a more um engaged community discussion.
Um, maybe a request for Sarah, could she um send?
Um, send a couple city council samples out of when their meeting dates are? And we could tune in and see an audio only, a video, you know what I mean? So we can see how it looks from the public watching it on. YouTube or wherever they're watching it. So we could get an idea.
If, if you'd like, most cities have recording, video recordings of their meetings and I could uh, research that and send links to video recordings of. Uh, other cities and meetings that um, have those types of formats.
No, it would just be helpful to go see it live, so to speak, you know?
Sure. Um. One, one item I did want to mention, uh, there was a comment earlier about a physical setting for comments. As well as Zoom and one of the limitations, uh, not saying there might not be some solution that could be figured out. But a hybrid type of technology, PCTV has indicated that that's very uh. Difficult, if, if not impossible for them to manage that and be broadcasting online as well as on cable TV. The meeting. So that, so a hybrid approach i- is potentially a challenge.
I don't think that's necessary. To have it in person, because it complicates things way too much.
Yeah.
A- and like Mike said, you're putting another person at risk by having to be there when people are coming in and out. And getting and managing the people again. This is much more manageable.
Um, well, I have, that was a good discussion and I have uh, enough uh, input regarding that topic. If there's not others, I'll move on to the second. Item. Uh, next slide, please, Sarah. So, so this item, not, not to really discuss in detail, and we hit on it a little bit, but one of the. One of the drivers here is that, you know, numerous important city business items are currently delayed. Um, because of they're, they're really important and, and the idea, you know, months ago was, well, we want to wait till we can do in-person meetings again. Um, as the, as the, you know, various deadlines uh, approach and um. These items become more essential business to pick up again. And so one of the uh. One of the thoughts here is, you know, kind of, are we heading in the direction of the city council being comfortable? With doing some of these items in our, whatever our new version of public input, hundred percent virtual meeting is. Uh, but starting to uh, agendize these important topics that are becoming essential. And I'm thinking of, you know, if there are things like. The Sharp Park specific plan, the general plan update, um, other, you know, major city council projects that are on the to-do list. Um, again, who knows? I mean, maybe two months we'll be able to meet in person again, but maybe not. So. You know, we do our uh, agenda planning months in advance and so. Uh, getting a sense from the council about, yeah, this is kind of the direction we're heading um, would be helpful.
Um, Kevin, with the guidelines that were just announced for places of worship, could they be adapted? For city council meetings? And, you know, when, because I think it was like using no more than a quarter of the space or. Not more than a hundred people or whatever, and maybe we look to see. If there is some venue in town that could accommodate that?
That, I, I'm not familiar with the specific guidelines, but um, I know in terms of a physical setting, that is a possibility. You know, if there's a place large enough. I also uh, you know, doing a remo- I um. I don't want to use the word remote, a uh, a council show on the road. Let's, let's call it that. Um, it is a uh, is a, is a fairly costly and significant undertaking for city staff, so that's one component to it. But yeah, I mean, we would look at all of those gathering, uh, all of those guidelines that apply to moving back to in-person meetings. Um, and we know we, we can do a physically distanced appropriately meeting at the council chambers, but that limits public. That can be in there to about twenty folks at a time. Um, and so if you had more than that, but. It's something we can look at in the future.
I wasn't so much thinking of the council meetings. I was thinking more of the public input meetings like we had for the local coastal plan.
Right.
That weren't necessarily televised, but you know, you would still receive public input. And kind of get something, get it started again.
Yeah, in a larger venue. Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the, we'll have to look at the guidelines and, and the. The, you know, the health order and see what it says about related to city business meetings.
Well, I mean, it's a large gatherings is what the criteria was. And now I'm just going to what I've read in the paper and on the internet. I haven't seen the actual order. But it was something like, you know, twenty-five percent of the physical area. Now, I believe it said not more than a hundred and they had to be socially distant away and all that, so.
Other comments on, on this topic?
Is there a requirement that all the pub, that a input session, kind of like what we had with the local coastal plan? Does that have to be live streamed or can it be filmed or just input in the meeting?
I'm, I'm not understanding the, the question. Is there, it, is.
When we had, when we had like those meetings for housing for all at the different schools, okay? We just had a meeting and I don't believe they were filmed and they weren't live streamed or anything. Those are the kind of meeting. Is there a requirement that? Like with the Sharp Park specific plan, can we have those kinds of meetings so that the plans are happening, but not necessarily? You know what I mean? Live streamed or taped or whatever, just so we can kind of start getting the input.
Yeah, those, those um, those public information meetings or public input meetings that are not. City council meetings uh, don't need to be live streamed. And as a matter of fact, not, city council, there's not a requirement, I don't believe. Attorney Bizzano could correct me to, to stream city council meetings, because you can do study sessions uh, off-site. And, and not have to stream them uh, like we do goal setting and such. So I don't think there's a requirement for that.
Yes, this Denise Bizzano, um, Assistant City Attorney. I'm not aware of any requirement for streaming the um. Public outreach meetings. Pursuant to the Brown Act and the governor's um, orders relating to the Brown Act. Uh, the public just has to be able to part, to observe and address the meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically. So if it's a meeting required pursuant to the Brown Act, then there would be a, a, a requirement that people be able to observe and address the meeting. Telephonically or electronically.
So the public input sessions like we had for housing for all are not subject to the Brown Act, because there's. No decisions being made. They're just public input, correct? So therefore they would not need to be streamed?
Right. They, they'd still be subject to the county health order limitation on.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, um. Should I, should I move on to the next item or is there other comments on this? So more to come as we develop future agendas. Now, next slide, please. So I, I just wanted to raise this because it's imminent. Um, you know, this weekend, we, we opened up the parking prohibitions on streets. Surrounding the beach parking lots and um, you're well aware of the pressures related to beach parking. Uh, neighborhood, you know, it's, it's, you, you know, it's a, it's a no-win situation from the city's perspective, because. Um, when uh, parking limitations are in place. Uh, as a disincentive for people coming to the beach, those that still come to the beach park in neighborhoods. And that creates impacts in the neighborhoods, but if parking is opened up, then people that live near the beach. Uh, are concerned about the, the crowds that are coming to the beach. So it's a catch-twenty-two situation, but. Uh, on a united basis with Half Moon Bay and the county and, and state park beaches. Working to coordinate together concerning reopening of beach parking and uh. Actively working on that this week for the potential for beach parking to open later this week potentially. So. I just wanted to mention that and kind of gauge the council, um, you know, uh, input um, regarding this topic, because. As, as I mentioned, this is one of the, one of the major time resource and impacts on uh, enforcement and uh. Overtime from police and a, a lot of different departments, energy and time has been related to the beaches.
Now, the beaches are closed because of county order or the state order?
The, the parking lots?
Yeah, the parking lots.
The, no, the, the current order is that the city uh, may reopen parking now.
Okay, and what about, what requirement is there for the beaches?
There, there's never been a restriction on the beaches other than the physical distancing, uh, the wearing of masks. The accessories, not, not having lounging accessories. And, and just using the beach for essential uh, exercise activity. Those are the only health order requirements on the beach currently.
My feeling is if this, if they say we can open up the beach parking, go for it.
I say open it as soon as. I was in favor of closing it, but I saw what happened and, you know, like you said, it's, it's a no-win situation, because. People are going to say there's too many people at the beaches, because they're parking there, but I think that. The effects on the neighborhoods has been horrendous. And it just spreads back further and further into the neighborhoods, the more things that we close. And I say we just open it back. Um, I, I totally believe in social distancing and staying at home and wearing a mask whenever you're outdoors. And I think people have to do that on their own, but I think we need to open them up tomorrow. Uh, the complaints I got about Wednesday, opening the farmer's market and not having any places to park. So people just parked all over in red zones, saying, well, I, I had no place to park. Um, it doesn't allow for good behavior, um, because you can't, you know. Y- y- you can't uh, make people behave better, but I think opening them up will help people to behave better. Opening them up will help people.
I agree.
Yeah, open them up. It's messy out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would have vote for as soon as possible.
So Kevin.
Uh, sorry, I, I would vote for as soon as possible. Uh, sorry, I, I would. Does somebody have a two? Sources of audio on? Yeah. Okay, I'll say it again. I would vote for as soon as possible. Uh, given the amount of feedback that we're getting on an hourly basis and being down there myself. And a lot over the course of the past two weeks, um, to observe, it's gnarly. Sue Beckmar?
I agree. Um, I believe that we need to open them up um, as soon as possible with, but with um. Respect to what City Manager Woodhouse was saying about uh, working with our partners south of, of Pacifica too. Um, I do see the need to kind of coordinate. It, it seems like um. Ran into some trouble uh, with a lack of coordination. With implementing the orders as they came from the Department of Health. Um, so I understand the need to coordinate with the sh- the sheriff's department and um. Highway Patrol, I guess, if they have one person assigned to that uh, south of us. So that would be my only consideration there.
The mayor of Half Moon Bay has talked about it from day one.
Right.
He, as soon as they closed the beach parking lots, it became a problem for them. And he was saying from day one, when can we open these parking lots?
Right.
So I'm sure that they would tend to agree with. Vacation that we open them up as soon as possible. Plus the poor businesses that are suffering because of it.
Okay, uh, great. Thank you for that. And the last item, uh, next slide, please. Uh, is really related to park speech and recreation and, and um, I don't have a, a lot of detail to provide on here and, and. PBNR Director Mike Perez could get on the line and answer questions or talk specifically. Um, but they've been doing. Um, some really, the, some of these programs are the most complex related to the health orders and. Transitioning from stage one to stage two of opening. And so a lot of work is going into. How and when childcare could occur, summer camps, uh, the pool, other recreational facilities. Uh, the department has also been conducting surveys of those that have already signed up for childcare or programs or were interested in to gauge. Their interest in those services and um, and is really, you know, if, if you, when you look at the. PBNR chapter of the RUIT, you'll see a lot of great detail in there, um, and a lot of complexity. So um, if the council has specific questions, Director Perez can answer those, or if Director Perez. Is so inclined, can, can come on and, and sort of summarize some of the, some of the highlights.
Hi, uh, good evening, councilmembers. Uh, Parking Rec. Director Michael Perez. Um, most of the information that we have right now is uh, in the report, and I would consider a lot of these things very complex and um. Uh, ever evolving. Um, a lot of the uh, things that we uh, want to do are going to be predicated on what we're allowed to do. Um, and um. And do it in a way that's, that's safe, not only for our staff, but also for our uh, participants. Um, and in particular, we have uh, currently childcare is happening online via. Distance learning in uh, virtual camps until the end of, of June. We're looking at, um, it's kind of says in the um, the phasing of our plans, uh, having a specific uh, shortened uh, summer camp possibly. Based on the guidelines and rules um, that are, they're in place right now. Um, it'd probably be the weekend after July fourth. There's uh, also um, uh, in our last order from the county, they did say that pools could be open, but there's a lot of restrictions there. And we're trying right now to evaluate how we can uh, manage that safely. Um, and uh, it would be a limited amount of programs and certain program types. Um, so there's a lot of, of things going on there uh, with our services. Um, and we're trying to get together to have a semblance of a, of a summer. With uh, some of our, our essential programs. And again, uh, just relating to things we are doing right now, as the seniors continue to. Uh, do uh, grab and go lunch and the Meals on Wheels program is also uh, still happening. So we've got. A section of our staff and our programs that are still happening. Um, while a, a lot of the other divisions are sort of working on uh, getting into the next phase and the phase after that as well. And happy to answer any questions if you have any specific ones.
I don't have any questions. I um, just, you know, make the recommendation rocket run. And uh, we can all run our own five miles and nobody will have to see how slowly we went. And we don't have to do the hills.
I had thought that childcare, they're allowing childcare. I'm sure they have specific regulations, but they are allowing childcare, right, to open?
Oh, there, there's very specific uh, regulations on childcare and they are, and it's not for everyone either. Um, a few of them include having a stable group. A few of them include having a stable group, 12 children that cannot change and you cannot add to them. So if some of those kids fall off, then you can't replace them. There's limits on the staff members. So the same staff with the same children. And there's also the fact that we have funding from our, for our subsidized program. They are funding us through the end of the school year and they are having us do the distance learning and the virtual camps right now. But it's kind of a parallel thing with the, the childcare and the educational recreational camps have some very similar requirements that you'll see. One of them for the summer camps is that they have to be enrolled for a four week period. So they can't be in for a week or two weeks. They have to be in for a whole four weeks. So we, we are evaluating and going through all of those things right now. But currently, for instance, school is not in session, so we would not be in session during the school year on the school grounds right now.
Thank you.
Michael, do you know, are the private daycare providers in the school district temporary taught, tending, et cetera? Are they open now?
Not to my knowledge, but yeah, I, I don't believe they are. I believe there might be some private providers that are happening that are more in home or, you know, the non-center ones. I could check and get back on that, but I do not believe there's any programs happening at school right now.
The other question I have is, I think as a support measure, if parents need to get back to work, they obviously can't go back to work unless they have daycare. So it's kind of a command ram and circle, but I just, it's important to realize that it's without the daycare or childcare and the summer camps, a lot of our parents won't be able to go back to work.
Yeah, we, we are sending our daughter back on Monday to the in-home daycare that has five not full-time mother kids. And our intern of a Christian is open to a central worker, children of essential workers, which my husband and I both are. And we would not be able to really work effectively from home if they weren't going to open because the people that we hired to take care of our kids were the women that were laid off. So Mike, you're right on. And for those folks that were relying on that. I, you know, I expressed that earlier that I hope we don't lose business for our, I know we have a waiting list as long as a roll of toilet paper, but it, but it could disappear because the other, the other schools, they're only allowing essential, but I would say by July, they have to, you know.
Um, not to change the subject, but it's about six minutes to 11.
Oh, oh, I'm glad you changed the subject. Anybody have any questions about this? Do we, do we have a lot more or do we need to take a vote on extension?
We still need to take public comment.
Oh, yeah.
But that, that completes staff's presentation. I know it was long, but an important topic for now. And you know, that, that completes what we wanted to discuss.
Okay, great. So clerk coffee, can we open a public comment?
Mayor Martin, before we take public comment, maybe we should entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay.
I move, we extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
Please roll call vote.
Councilmember Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And the motion to extend to midnight passes with a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, we have a lot of public comments.
Um, I do not see any public comments on this item number nine. We do have one more agenda item following this though.
Okay, do we need to take a five minute break for bio? All right, we'll see you back at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Mayor Martin, would you like me to read in public comments on this item at this time?
Yes, please.
So for item number nine, I have a comment come in from Sue Degree. Her comment is the restoration operations planning is a great idea to ensure the resiliency and safety of our city and our residents. Thanks, Sue Degree. Suzanne Drake has also submitted a public comment on this item and she states it's there a gauge in parentheses crystal ball of timelines in starting these phases of opening. Are there other areas that are comparable to Pacifica which have different ideas slash methods, Suzanne? And she also states that she thinks the idea of the Zoom meetings is great. Uh, she also asks if city council resumes or as city manager Kevin stated, said, take, taking meetings on the road. Is there a chance we can keep a Zoom component? And that looks like all of the public comments that I've received on item number nine, let me just do a quick recheck. Yes, I don't have any further comments at this time on item number nine.
Okay, great. Okay, we will move on then.
Mayor Martin?
Yep.
Just to clarify, you're going to close public comment and bring it back to council?
Yeah, I didn't know we had to do that since we already closed. We already brought it back to council, so I will close public comment, bring it back to council and ask the manager if he has what he needs. Mike has a question.
I just had a question from Mike Perez. And in terms of getting back, getting our parents back to work, the ones that are, the kids that are probably subsidized daycare are probably the lower income, lower economic people in Pacifica. And I was wondering, can they be given a preference for whatever childcare spots open up in our facilities?
So that's pretty complicated, but probably the short answer is yes. But imagine that we do open up and we can only have 12 children in the classroom. And if we have, you know, 100 kids at that site normally, we're not going to be able to fit all those kids in there. So we're trying to establish who would be coming back just for the summer. And if they are, would they come back under the current conditions that we will be required to have? And that's not even, you know, we, we have to further look at the school year because right now the school, I don't think they know what they're going to be doing, whether they're going to have kids there, all the kids all the time. Or whether they're going to have split days or something like that, or children come on different days. So we're, we will have to adapt to that in the fall and we will hope that numbers wise, it'll work out for the summer. But we will have to figure out a way, it's most likely we're going to have more demand than we will have spots, but we just don't know that yet. And we're, we're working very hard on getting that information.
Thank you. That, that's all my questions.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Okay, I think we can move on to item 10. Proposed 2020, 21 general fund budget, other funds overview. We are to receive presentation on a proposed 2020, 2021 budget for the wastewater enterprise fund for those years, capital improvement program budget, other funds and related budget strategies. City manager Woodhouse and assistant city manager Lorenzo Hines. Take it away.
Okay, Lorenzo Hines here, assistant city manager. We'll wait for the presentation. And let's go with the first slide, next slide, please. And so what we'll do tonight is we'll go over the, the other funds. The last time we met regarding the budget, I presented the general fund budget to you. And the slide before you is the slide that I presented then. Our general fund budget is roughly $37 million on the expenditure side and on the revenue side because it is balanced. We did have an issue in the current year as well, and that's the COVID-19 impacted year-end budget. That budget is also balanced as well. So tonight, we're going to present the other $36 million that is in the city's budget. The city has roughly 26 funds, 26 other funds outside of the general fund, sorry, 25 other funds outside of the general fund. And I'll do what I can to encapsulate those funds. We're just going to talk about some of the, some of the high level funds. And we're not necessarily going to talk about them all. Let's go with the next slide. And so our timeline is back on April 27th, we started the, the whole process. And we moved on to May 4th where the, the CIP was presented to the Planning Commission. May 11th, which is when we presented the general fund budget to council. And May 26th is where we are tonight and we'll talk about the, the next phase of the budget. Can I get the next slide, please? And I basically encapsulated, just said everything that's on this slide. I just wanted to bring to your attention the third bullet. The remaining budget again is the remaining budgets are $36 million for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And the related capital budget, which we'll talk about a little later, is the non-enterprise capital budget is 9.47 million. And the wastewater enterprise capital budget is 4.1 million. In the staff report, the number that I reported was not accurate and so this number represents an updated number. Next slide, please. Before we get into the wastewater budget, I, I wanted you to look at the all funds budget summary attachment. That's part of your council packet. And this attachment lays out all of the funds outside of the general fund from Fund 38 all the way down to the motor pool funds. all the way down to the motor pool funds, Fund 71 and 72. Along with your packet, you also have fund descriptions that explain what each fund does and why it exists. And so that information is there to educate not only council, but to educate the public at large about how our budget is put together. But we're going to talk about some of the, some of the larger or more visible funds within that group of other funds. The first group of, the first couple of funds we'll talk about is Fund 18 and Fund 34. And Fund 18 and Fund 34 are under the direction and span of control of the wastewater enterprise fund. And so their mission is to maintain and operate the Calera Creek Water Recycling Plant in compliance with regulatory permits from the state and the State Water Resources Control Board, Bay Area Air Quality Management, EPA, and the San Mateo County Environmental Health Department. Wastewater Enterprises broken up, broken up into two distinct divisions. There's plant operations, which operates the plant, which treats about 4 million gallons of raw sewage a day. They have a maximum capacity of 20 millions, 20 million gallons per day. The other side of the wastewater enterprises collection system. And they maintain and clean and repair roughly 104 miles of collection system pipeline throughout the system. And they operate and maintain five sewer and two storm pump stations. Next slide, please. And so the budget for Fund 18, Fund 18 is basically the operations for wastewater. And this is how plant and collections are all funded. And so you can see that the budget for last year was on the expenditure side about 17.5 million. It's 18.7 million this year. The main driver is there is more dollars going into capital projects. And we expect the wastewater enterprise in the budget year to be 100% cost recovered. It's 90%, 98% cost recovered this year because there was some unexpected expenditures related to issues with one of our pump stations burning down and some other, some other issues. But 98% is still pretty good. Next slide, please. Fund 34 is also under the span of control of the wastewater. And this is how they fund, and this is where they fund the expenditures for all of their capital projects. And as you can see for fiscal year 2020, 2021, there are a number of projects planned for the plant itself. A number of projects for repair, rehab and replacement projects on the collection side. There's the lateral grand assistance program. And there's other collections projects and there's some miscellaneous projects as well. And so those total, total projects, we will see these projects in detail later in this PowerPoint presentation. But the total for the budget year is 4.1 million. And if there's any questions about the, the pension obligation bond repayment that the general fund is paying into the wastewater enterprise, that was included in the revenues in the prior slide for Fund 18. Although I didn't break it out, but it was part of those revenues.
Thank you. I was going to ask that, Lorenzo.
I had a feeling. So next slide, please. The next fund is the supplemental law enforcement services fund. And so this provides funding for frontline law enforcement operations. The funds are allocated by the state controller, California State Controller to counties, distributed from the county controller through the city. And so our plan this year is to, our plan next year is to fund, continue funding the two part-time community service officers. And also to fund equipment and training. And so the total expenditures in the budget year will be 297 million, I'm sorry, $297,000. Next slide, please. And you can see from this document here where we've tracked the beginning fund balance, starting at the beginning of 2019, 2020. We've added revenues, we've backed out projected expenditures, and we can see what the projected fund balance will be at the end of this fiscal year. Going into 2021, we expect we'll move that, roll over that balance and we'll have the projected revenue of 100,000. You saw how we were going to spend those dollars. And we expect to end up with a fund balance at the end of the budget year of 67,500. And can we, can we have the next slide, please? Fund 27, which is the Roy Davies Trust Fund. And so it is a trust fund and, and the funds are to be used to support the infrastructure and parks, beaches and recreation in areas throughout the city of Pacifica. These expenditures that come out of this fund can only be expended on a four-fifths council vote. And that's stipulated in the way the trust was set up. And so for fiscal year 2020 and 21, staff is proposing to appropriate funds from this fund for playground equipment improvement, the Edgemar Park upgrade, a fitness court and the Beach Boulevard Park Plaza. And and so that's the plan thus far from Fund 27. Next slide, please. The next slide is the Beach Parking Fund or the Parking Enterprise Fund. Accounts for all revenues and expenses associated with beach parking program. And it was started in August of 2013. Next slide, please. And so this is our projected budget for this particular fund. This fund, like the wastewater enterprise fund, is also an enterprise fund. And so it supports and it has to support itself. Last year, we had a budget of revenue budget of 616,000 and, and had expenditures of 614. Those were the projected numbers. However, because of the closure of the beach, we realized and we, we're still working on this number, but we know that the revenue number that you see there, we've only received about 400,000 or 450,000 of that number. And so we're watching to see how much of the fund balance that's in this fund will actually have to be used to offset the revenues, offset lost revenues for this particular year. But for next year, we have balanced the budget. You can see that we brought down the parking citations number. And, and to reflect decreased activity there. We've also brought down the pay station number to reflect some decreased activity there. But there is an anticipation that maybe this, this, this parking lot will be open sometime during the summer. So we have a balanced budget of 540 on the revenue side. We have a, we have 534,000 on the expenditure side. Next slide, please. And so here's how we've broken down the Parking Enterprise Fund where we're anticipating. Well, we, we had a beginning fund balance at the beginning of this fiscal year of 135,000. Typically, the fund balance in this fund is used to replace parking, the parking meters or the parking machine or to do any striping or any maintenance on the parking lot. For this year, our projected revenues, as I mentioned, are off by a couple of hundred thousand. But we'll be keeping an eye on that. And projected expenditures, I'll be looking at that to see if we're still on track to reach that 640. Or projected fund balance, if everything had stayed the same, would have been 110,000. That would have rolled over into the fiscal year and where we would have had balanced spending and revenues. And we would have maintained that balance, so that fund balance. But this one is still under review by myself, but I wanted to make sure you saw where we were at this point in time. Next slide, please. And so the next four slides, and I, I added some yellow there just to make sure everybody stayed awake at this late hour. So the next four slides detail our capital program, our capital budget. And so we just went over some of the high level funds. And so we'll talk about the capital budget. There are a few decisions to be made here regarding priorities. And we wanted to get the whole budget in front of you all. So you can kind of see what, what the universe looks like here. And so I, I, Sam, if you're on the line, you're welcome to pipe in here or any of your staff. But, but what we have here on the first sheet is the proposed new projects that Public Works is recommending. And so this goes from civic center evaluation, our harvest, urban forest land management, the pavement rehab project, slurry seal project, the fire station alerting system replacement, police station visitor lot lighting, storm drainage, master plan update, the Grand Avenue pavement traction project, Oddstead parking rehab, Beach Boulevard seawall repair and the Public Works Office and Facility Assessment. So those, that first group represents one-time spending. And then at the, in the next section, we're adding some ongoing projects. And these are multi-year projects. And the annual pavement, pavement striping and, and marking refresh project, the drainage improvement projects and sidewalk repair program. And so these are the new projects that Public Works is requesting this year. So the total for new projects is 1.97 million. Of that 1.97 million, it looks like about 400, 400, almost 500,000 will be a general fund. So let's go to the next slide, please. The luck, the next slide is this group represents projects that are already in play. However, we need additional funding or Public Works is requesting additional funding for these existing projects. And these existing projects are carryover one-time projects that we did last year, that we approved last year that need additional funding. And there are also ongoing projects that need additional funding. And so they're in the two different sections there. And so you have repairs to the Fairmont West site, the Station 72 deck improvement, the fitness courts, court, playground equipment, Edgemar Park upgrade, city building and roof repairs. As far as the one-time projects are concerned, as far as the ongoing projects are concerned, you've got Beach Boulevard Park and Plaza. And so that's, we're looking at a total of about 900,000 total funding for all of those projects. And the general fund share of that is roughly 200,000. Let's go to the next slide, please. And so this next slide represents one-time projects that we did last year that don't require additional funding. These are just projects that we started last year and we just haven't completed yet. And we'd like to carry them over into this year. The funding was already set aside last year for the most part, but we just wanted to make sure that you saw the reason why these projects were still on the list. And so that's Public Works' work order system, their ongoing maintenance, the City Hall emergency generator switch, there's a Sarah Outfall repair, Frontier Land Walkway and Drainage, Parks, Beaches and Trail signage, the Slurry Seal Project, Palm Meadow Sidewalk Project, Cabrillo School Pedestrian Crossing, Beach Boulevard Seawall Construction, Skate Park Fence, Pacifica State Beach Parking Lot, Slurry Seal and Malaga Creek Outfall Repair, the Fuel Management System that we're still looking at and the Palm Meadow Avenue Street Amenities. And so we're looking at the general fund share of those projects is only 60,000. Can I get to the next slide, please? And this is the, the last slide. And so this is just ongoing multi-year projects that are already, that were already on the schedule. And that consists of the San Pedro Creek Bridge Replacement, Manor Drive, O and P Improvement, San Pedro Creek and Pacific State Beach Total Maximum Load, Monitoring Plan and the Best Management Plan. There is a line here for the research for the new Pacifica Library, long-term trash load reductions. And there are a couple of projects dealing with Espalinaan Infrastructure Preservation. And so these are long-term projects. They're being funded for the most part out of other funds and grants. And can we have the next slide, please? Now we move to the new projects for the wastewater enterprise fund. And so we are, the first two lines are projects that are underway that we believe will be funded by other sources outside of the cities, outside of the city's resources. The next, the third project down has to do with the repair and replacement for the collection system. We'll be doing, the next project, we'll be doing a new sewer rate study because we're, we're getting toward the end of our five years that brought on the last rate structure that we're currently on. And so we're going to be doing another sewer rate study and we'll be bringing probably a, a new rate proposal before council in about a year or so. Also, we'll be looking at collections, the solar system improvement project, the process optimization project and the ultraviolet disinfection service system upgrade, which I try not to ask too many questions about because it's just, it's just complicated. Next slide, please. Mike?
Yeah, question. The solar system improvement project, I had spoken to Kevin about that after you and I had discussed what they did in Hayward.
Yes.
And once that solar system improvement project, do, do we have any estimate as to how much more electricity it will generate with the solar system? And if the Coastal Commission will allow it, do we have any thought processes on that or updates?
Well, Deputy Director Louis Sun is probably on the call somewhere, so I'm sure he can probably speak to that.
Castle member O'Neil, this is Louis Sun, Deputy Director, Public Works for Wastewater. To answer your question, once we have the new, the solar panel installed, we're projecting to be able to produce about 10 to 15% of our use of electricity. That, that's about the maximum we can generate when it comes to using solar panels. You know, we're also looking at other potential locations, you know, within the site to perhaps add solar panels.
But the present system was generating somewhere around 15%, wasn't it? Isn't it? Or?
That's correct. This project is actually enhanced the present, the, the current system that we have. We do have a lot of panels that needs to be replaced. And this project will allow us to incorporate about one-third to update those panels.
So, I mean, I think if I remember correctly, the, those panels must have been installed like 20 years ago or whatever, right? When the plant was first built or soon thereafter. Yeah, soon thereafter. And I would think the technology has improved that you know, that we could get maybe 20 to 25%. No, I'm guessing, I'm obviously not a solar engineer. And that one of the biggest hurdles was going to be the Coastal Commission because they didn't want us to, they made us sign a document where we would ask for no more solar panels or something. So the technology has not improved in the 20 years that plant's been open?
The technology has improved. You're correct, the current panels were about 20, installed about 20 years ago. Even though it was installed 20 years ago, we still have plenty of warranty left on the, in them. The only thing is these panels are no longer supported by Panasonic. And so we're in the process of working with them to get some newer panels to get them installed. And you're correct, some of these newer panels To get them installed and you're correct, some of these newer panels, they will have better efficiencies than the one that we have. So, you know, we're still working with them to see if we can, you know, improve that efficiency. Like you said, I earlier I mentioned about 10 to 15%. That's currently what we're getting now. But, you know, working with Panasonic and working with potentially other solar panel manufacturers. We might be able to get, you know, higher, you know, production out of these newer panels.
Now, I know one of the issues was is we had this warranty project that, you know, was really the best thing since sliced bread in that we were actually in Panasonic, I guess that's the manufacturer. Actually would like to get rid of it because it's not worthwhile to them. And they were actually willing to write us a check to but get us to buy out. Is that not on the table anymore?
No, that is still on the table and we're still working with them. I I think that's probably the better option and that is what we're aiming is to just have them cut us a check and allow us to pursue a different manufacturer or, you know, to buy newer panels with with a new set of warranties.
And with better efficiency, you think?
I think so.
Okay, do we think we can get it up to like 20, 25%? Because that's going to affect the rates sewer rate study. Obviously, the more power we can generate from them, the less the sewer rate will have to go up.
Absolutely.
You know, so will we be able, you think that will be able to be implemented before we do the sewer rate study?
Yes, the solar project we're we're really targeting in July. We already been working with them and as soon as we get into the new fiscal year, we're going to implement that project.
Have you talked to the Coastal Commission about whether or not they're going to allow us to do it? Because they had heartburn over the other part when we put them in.
This is just replacing within our current layout. So we're not really adding any new additional panel. So this is already, you know, they're already been approved by the Coastal Commission.
Okay, so it's just to stay in the existing footprint. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, and then you're going to look to see if there's any place else we can put additional there to try to get more wattage out of there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Can we go to the next slide, please? And these are a summary of all of the ongoing projects that are currently being pursued by the Wastewater Enterprise. They've got work with Lindemar Pump Station, upgrading that project. The their various collection systems projects, the Rockaway Pump Station Upgrade, Collection System Rehab and Replacement. Sewer System Master Plan, Sharp Park Pump Station, the Lateral Grant Assistance. We want to make sure we always break that out because that's a very important program and we definitely want to make sure that it continues to be pursued. The Collections Pump Replacement, SCADA and PLC Upgrade, Roof Improvements. Blower Improvements or Blower Replacement, San Pedro Creek and Pacifica State Beach TDL. And Calera Creek and Wetlands Maintenance and the Digestors. Which is the ATAD Modification, and that's another one of those areas where I just don't ask too many questions. Because I'm afraid of the answer I might get. Okay, and that's where we stand with the Wastewater Capital Projects. All told, the general fund share of these projects is roughly roughly 700,000. The and then there is a project. City Clerk Coffee, can you go back to the yellow slide with all the yellow in it, please? Thank you. And so the Civic Center Evaluation and Remediation. This is to deal with some of some of the structural issues that we're dealing with that on the City Hall Campus. And so the funding is to be determined. And and so we we will have that number or proposal for you at some point in the future. The other thing that we wanted to propose to you is that we we realize that these are new projects. And we also realize that our budget situation is 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 going well, but, you know, we've got challenges. So what we would like to do with these projects is sort of take a wait-and-see attitude. And I think City Manager Woodhouse, which can probably give you a little more detail on our approach on these projects.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Some of these projects are not scheduled to begin until the second half of the fiscal year. And in particular, if you look at the double asterisks on the Oddstead Parking Rehabilitation and Drainage Improvements. What we will do for those projects that aren't scheduled to begin until the second half of the fiscal year is we'll do a check-in at our mid-year update. To see how, you know, see what the city's financial state is. So if everything proceeds as we've projected with revenues and expenditures. This would be the plan with the dollar in funding amount related to Civic Center Remediation to be determined. But if we at mid-year are, you know, seeing lower revenues. Then we can readjust some of these general fund projects. So similar to our our general fund budget, you know, we're in a difficult time for projecting right now. Our revenues accurately and we want to do a robust check-in, actually quarterly, but at the mid-year budget significantly.
Kevin Lorenzo, in regards to the Civic Center Evaluation and Remediation. When you were talking about the ROP, you were talking about what additional protection RPPEs we were going to need for employees and whatever. Is this going to be part of that, the PPE? Or am I making sense?
There there's definitely a connection between looking at and designing the space of these facilities. And improvements that are necessary, when I say these facilities, I mean at the Civic Center. And the space requirements in what will become our new normal, which is what the ROP is about. So there's absolutely a connection there. And so so it's good timing in order to try to figure that out as we're looking at what remediation is necessary at these buildings.
And then the Beach Boulevard Seawall Breach Repair. I see that's coming out of Fund 38 Disaster Account.
Yeah.
Now, there was that one slide that Ryan had where I think it was out of the California Boating. Waterways and Boating, we were going to have to have a dollar-for-dollar match of 750. Is this 150 towards that? How much is in Fund 38 so we can start planning that we actually have the matching funds? It would is that two years if I remember right or three years?
Well, Public Works works with our accounting, works with our Financial Services Manager to make sure that there's adequate match and there's adequate utilization of free dollars in Fund 38. So while I know that's a concern, I would be very surprised if that hasn't been taken under consideration. When Public Works was planning the project that they presented to you earlier.
So will the Beach Boulevard 750,000 match? Will that be in our capital budget from now on until the project actually the shovel hits the dirt? Or is that just going to be, you know, kind of?
Usually the matches are kept in the fund balance of Fund 38.
And then will there be an indicator in that as this part is already kind of spent or committed?
Yeah, we we have, yeah, we 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 work with Public Works pretty closely and and those dollars are definitely designated for particular purposes. Going, we've got dollars going all the way back to 2014, 2015, which have been designated for math purposes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And I just I just wanted to point out to to explain this item. This is actually a a a emergency reserve amount. Because related to new breaches in the seawall. As as Public Works staff mentioned earlier, Mr. Marquez, you know, this year we had a couple just north of the pier. On the north side of the seawall and and had to spend some money on that. So this is a this is holding this money in case we have additional breaches that we need to address on an emergency basis. And that would come out of Fund 38.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my presentation.
While we were on that slide, thank you for putting in lights at the police station. Mike almost fell over an animal there and it's really bad at night when you're leaving meetings and it definitely needs lights.
I have a question on this slide as well. I'm looking at the pavement rehabilitation project and the slurry seal project. And I my question is, do these dollar amounts, I have to move the gallery, sorry. These dollar amounts that are in the anticipated grants slash measure W SB1, measure W column. Do these dollar amounts include funds for bike lane striping? Should that come to fruition on Terranova Boulevard?
I'll let Deputy Director Bautista respond to that.
Well, yeah, and I can respond to, I just want to draw the difference between this year's slurry seal project. Which is which are funds from measure W and or SB1 that are funded this year. Which includes the Terranova Project. These monies are for next year.
Okay.
So these are monies not received yet from these sources that would be for the next iteration of slurry seal projects and pavement paving projects. And so so your other question related to funding of bike lanes on Terranova when we do that slurry seal. Is that we're looking at what that cost would be to find where we can identify that funding. So so I don't have it, I don't have an answer about where that funding would come from right now. But our goal is when we do slurry seal projects, since you have to restripe the street anyways. Or when you do a pavement rehabilitation, is to install the bike lanes recommended by the Bike Head Master Plan at that time.
Right.
We just need to identify and if Director Bautista is on, maybe he can speak more specifically to to that.
I'm just, I have to echo what you just said, Kevin. We, you know, our slurry seal project for for Oddstead and Terranova, it's going to be going out at the end of the month. And and we definitely are having bike lanes in the project and we're going to get the price for that. And then, once we get, you know, once we open up the bid, then we'll know what or how much these bike lanes cost. And then we'll identify funding for bike lanes. And same with any of our slurry seal projects or any of our rehab projects. We will definitely coordinate our work with any of our, you know, with our bike and pedestrian master plans. And make sure that we put in, you know, ADA ramps, etc.
Okay, I thought it was on this slide, but it seems like it's not. Now I'm confusing myself, but I was looking for the Cabrillo School Crosswalk Project.
Sure, it's in 16. There we did it right there.
So the grant and stormwater fund amount of 298,000. Does that include completing the project with the landscaping? Or whatever bioswale that hasn't been done yet in that project? Is that already budgeted or where, how do I, how do I equate the status of that project with this dollar amount?
The the planting is actually later. So the base bid is just to fill up the these bioswells with the the proper fill or soil. And then later they they will put in. It will be a different project. So it's just, it's just a bioswale.
So the state of the project right now is incomplete. There's no filler inside those areas. That's already budgeted and it's included in this dollar amount that we're looking at here on this slide. But putting plants in it isn't budgeted.
Exactly. There's no landscaping in the project. It's just a bioswale.
Okay.
A question in regards to measure W and SB1. Now, if I remember correctly, the measure W is based on sales tax. And the figures you had in there for when one was like 600 and something thousand, one was 400,000. SB1 was 600,000. I forget SB1 was that, that was a bond or was that sales tax also? And are those amounts guaranteed that we're planning on getting? Or are those just estimates based on last year? Because sales tax revenue obviously is going to be down statewide.
From what I hear, the the those are like measure A money. And the SB1, we we found out that the number that you see there is a bit, a little bit lower than what is projected. So it sounds like we're going to get a little bit more money than the 600. You know, 600,000 that you see there. The measure W is that was projected 440. I haven't heard anything different from the county regarding that.
Okay, thank you.
So are you waving your hand? I can't tell your your background is flickering now, okay. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Clerk Coffee, for shepherding all the slides tonight.
Great, so with that, we don't have any other agenda items. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor Martin, we do have a few public comments on this item. Item 10, I have a public comment from Dan Studging. And he writes, Dear Council. Why is the wastewater treatment plant Fund 34 being used for unrelated maintenance like replacing the skate park fence? This asset has a documented history of requiring replacement due to use of an inferior grade of stainless steel that rested prior to the commencement of the equalization basin project. Fund 34 WWTP is supposed to be used for sewer facility construction fund. Receives all revenues associated with connection fees and accounts for capital improvement projects. Expenditures associated with plant and collection system projects. Fund 34 should not be used for the three items shown on packet page 194. Number one, $50,000 Public Works Department Office and Facility Assessment. Number two, $30,000 Skate Park Fence. Number three, $20,000 San Pedro Creek and Number three, twenty thousand dollars, San Pedro Creek and Pacifica State Beach Total Maximum Daily Load TMDL Monitoring Plan and Best Management Plan. It's important for the council to be a good steward of the public's money. Certain items are questionable and certain items like the skate park fence are clearly not appropriate for Fund Thirty-Four WWTP. Thanks, Dan Studging. I have a, a comment from Suzanne Drake. It, it appears it may be related to this item. She says, she says, Hi, City Council. First of all, huge shout out to the Pacifico Police Department for their terrific job in managing our beach visitors. Secondly, I understand Sharp Park will be one opening up soon. Two is slated to be paid parking. One, has City Council discussed residential slash locals parking permits? Two, controversially, I would be open to an annual fee for residential parking pass. Thank you so much for all you do, Suzanne Drake. And she says, PS, missed seeing Mary on this council meeting. Give her our best. I'm just browsing for any additional comments and I don't see any more comments related to item number ten.
Is there any, Sue?
Can someone explain why the skate park fence, which seems to be a parking wreck issue, is being paid by the wastewater treatment plant fund?
Let me, let me just sort of, and Louis, you pipe in here. But it's my understanding that when wastewater was installing the Equalization Basin, there was some damage done to the fence or the fence had to be taken out or somehow had to be altered. And let's bear in mind that the wastewater enterprise fund is its own enterprise. But if it does harm or creates cost for the, one of the other funds, it has to pay that share. And so if there's something, if, if, if in the installation of a wastewater infrastructure project, somehow, some way, the assets of the general fund are affected or denigrated in some way, then we expect wastewater to pay for it. These are, let's remember, these, these funds are separate businesses. They have their own assets.
The contractor that did it.
Huh? I'm sorry?
Sorry. So not the contractor that might have ruined the fence?
Well, it's just, it's, it's, it doesn't matter who, how it happened, but the way one enterprise, one fund affected the other fund's assets. And so just like the general fund has to pay wastewater back for the loan, if wastewater does damage to another fund, then it's got to pay for it.
Okay.
Okay. Louis, any, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, Assistant City Manager Heinz is correct. I think it was around two thousand eighteen is when we had that incident occur where the fence was damaged while SMCI was working, you know, in the EQ, EQ Basin construction area. It was unknown how that happened, but it was while, you know, they had that whole EQ Basin site sealed off. And the, most of the fence along or adjacent to the construction site, that was damaged during that time. I believe it was around mid-two thousand eighteen when that happened.
So, yeah, so there's, we, we make sure that there is equity between the twenty-six funds.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're approaching midnight, so this is time check, that's all.
Yeah. So does anyone have any other questions, more public comments? Are we free to adjourn? Okay.
We adjourn.
We can adjourn, yeah. I'd like to just send a quick shout out to Mary and hope that she gets better soon. So thanks, everyone. It is eleven fifty-five PM. The City of Civico's council meeting on May twenty-sixth is adjourned. Thank you.